Good evening. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Boardroom. We're going to have a quick Decennial Committee meeting before we start a regular board meeting, which is scheduled to start at 5:35. For the Decennial Committee meeting, Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bradrick.
Present.
Trustee Bazinski.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Gan.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Dr. Amy Gray.
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum, and I have two members that would like to be virtual.
Yes, please.
That's Ben Stoltz. I think he's on. Are you muted, Ben?
Oh, God.
Hold on. Did you put him on?
Yeah.
Ben Stoltz? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. You're present?
I am present.
Donny Chestnut? Okay. It doesn't look like she's here. We do have a quorum.
Like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Maria, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Me?
Yes.
I didn't do my homework.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is public comments, but these public comments are for comments related to the work of the Decennial Committee meeting only? Do we have any public comments?
Not for the Decennial Committee, no.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the October 16, 2024 meeting.
Second. Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gan.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Ben Stoltz.
Yes.
Dr. Amy Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And at this time, I request the motion for an adjournment of the Decennial Committee meeting.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We're adjourned.
We now begin the regular Board of Trustees meeting for Wednesday, November 13, 2024. Again, I'd like to call the order. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bradrick.
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Gan.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Present.
Trustee Stamboreski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Trustee Bazinski.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.3, we will stand again for the Pledge of Allegiance. This time, Alicia Brennan, if you're still in the room, could you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1.2, communications. Kelly Roder Tenelli.
Good evening, trustees and members of the campus community. It's my privilege each month to share an incredible partnership that highlights the college's deep commitment to our community. Tonight, we'll highlight a truly impactful event and fundraiser that supports vital resources for children and families in crisis. On October 19th, the college's Whiten Dorf Center served as the location for the Will County Center for Children's Advocacy 14th Annual Men Who Cook, which features amateur chefs who whip up their favorite appetizer or side dish, entree or dessert, and offer bite-sized samples to guests in a friendly and spirited competition. Just to give you a taste of how big this event is, yes, bad pun intended, 40 amateur cooks are invited to compete across categories, each bringing 500 to 800 two-ounce samples for over 1,000 guests to try.
Wow.
The Will County Center for Children's Advocacy was founded in 1995 by State's Attorney Jim Glasgow with the mission of providing a compassionate and coordinated response to child abuse and neglect. Now, I'd like to invite the Executive Director of the Center, Lisa Morales, to the podium to share more details about the amazing success of this partnership and collaboration.
Thank you very much. Obviously, I'm much shorter than Kelly, and I would like to say, as being at this esteemed education institution, that my background was in education, and I was a high school guidance counselor to Judy Conley. So how exciting is that? So you made a good hire. First of all, I would like to say, State's Attorney Glasgow is very sorry he can't be here today. Unfortunately, his schedule does not allow it today. He's very busy this week with other things, and so he asked me to please relay his things, and that's one of the reasons that I talked to Kelly and also Kristi Mulvey, to let both of them know that we would like to come together to address the board, because it's very helpful and it's very impactful for us to be able to have the Men Who Cook at the Whiten Dorf Center. And I also want to let you know what a great asset the building is, the site is, and the personnel that work there. So on behalf of Jim, first of all, State's Attorney Glasgow, I'd like to tell you that we are grateful and thankful for approving us, and we hope that it's our forever home, just saying. Kelly explained what Men Who Cook is, but what it does is, it's our only fundraiser that we have every year, and so by having that fundraiser, it helps us to defray the cost, because we're a modified semi-government organization, but also nonprofit. And so what happens is, whatever, we get state and federal money that comes to fund our services, to work with children who have been sexually abused, severely physically abused, trafficked, witness to violence, witness to murder, we have many of those, as well as just any kind of neglect or trauma. Because we get all state and federal money that comes through the county, any difference between that for our expenses, we have to cover with fundraising. So thank you very much for the opportunity, because we had first started Men Who Cook, this was our 14th one that we just held at the Whiten Dorf Center, and we've had very many homes, it seems like. The first year, we were at a banquet hall in Joliet, and there were so many cooks there using electrical appliances, that the power went out every single 15 minutes, and so that didn't work. Then we went to the IVW Hall, thinking, electricians, that will work. Well, we still had too many, and we were there for several years, but that ended up becoming too small. We then went to the operating engineers' training facility in Mokina, and that was a great location. We were there for many years. However, we then had to move because of their internal organization needed the space, and so we went to Chicagoland Speedway for three years. Then we ended up at the Whiten Dorf Center, and we're very happy to be here. Not only does State's Attorney Glasgow love it, but even, if those of you listen to Scott Slocum on WJOL, he recently, he manifested it via the airwaves, that we never leave the Whiten Dorf Center, saying that he called it our forever home. So I'm just saying, we love it. But I also, not only do we love the site and the location and your opportunity to let us have it, we appreciate Vicki Darnell, who works there. She, I just want you to know, she could not be a better ambassador for Joliet Junior College. She is energetic, she's welcoming, she's helpful, she's willing to tackle any challenge, and she engages so well with all our volunteers, our guests, and our staff. So I just want to thank you all for the opportunity and to put in kudos for Vicki. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item 1.3, retirement recognitions. Dr. Amy Gray.
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, and JJC community. We have, in the academic affairs area, four retirements that I'd like to share. The first one is Cindy Boczenic. She's retiring from JJC after almost nine years of service to the nursing department. She did start out as a student, earned her CNA, and then her associate degree, all while working as a clerk in our nursing lab. Cindy served as nursing lab clerk, nursing lab manager, and she's retiring as a nursing simulation specialist. We wish her the very best as she prepares to leave Illinois to retire to her newly-built, gorgeous home in the mountains of Tennessee. Her footprint in the nursing lab and nursing department will be seen for many years to come. And then we have Laura Egner from our math department. She was initially hired as a tutor in '88. She became an adjunct instructor in the math department in '97, and then a full-time faculty member in the math department in 2007, for a total years of service of 36. When asked about her retirement, she stressed that she felt very blessed to work with such great colleagues, both in disability services and the math department. More recently, she developed and led innovative programs to address student learning and earned the Innovation Award for the development of a continuum of math courses that allows students to accelerate through developmental ed in the same semester. She will be greatly missed in the math department. And then we have Alice Fritz. Alice is from our social behavioral sciences department. Her chair said that the retirement is truly bittersweet for all of us. She's been incredible, had incredible impact, especially on our education and child development programs, and not only did she bring expertise, but brought a deep passion for teaching, along with support and a friendly spirit that made her an exceptional colleague. She's made a huge difference here, and while we all are sad to see her go, we know her legacy will continue to inspire students and colleagues alike for years to come. And of course, they already want her back on a part-time basis. And then last, but definitely not least, Donna Cotula, full-time faculty member, who also started as an adjunct in 1992. She became a full-time faculty member in 2002 and has served at JJC in our math department for 32 years. Congratulations to all of them. They will be missed, but each and every one has left truly a legacy on JJC.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion and a second to accept the retirement recognition.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 1.4, public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
Jim, as Chair, I'd like to ask if I can read something first before the public comment starts.
No.
No.
I think we should.
No.
I think, Jim, I think you need to give the opportunity to say something.
You have a trustee report time spotted for you at the end of the meeting.
This is not regarding the trustee report, Jim. In all fairness, you should let me read this. It's very concerning.
Then this is something you should have approached me with while we were still planning the agenda for this meeting. It's not on the agenda. I'm going to ask that you hold it till we do our chair and trustee reports at the end of the meeting.
Karen, then I would like to fill out a form that I will plead on public speaking.
Currently, I-
Trustee Bradrick, you're not a member of the public.
You're not.
You have a platform here to speak as a trustee guest, provided on the agenda.
As a reminder, people that are going to be speaking, fill it out prior to the meeting.
Right, there's no-
Go ahead.
We can't accept the form the meeting started.
No. Go ahead, please.
There are 19-
Okay.
-public comments. The first one is Mark Jones, and he would like to speak regarding comments at the last meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Before we start, I'm just going to read a little housekeeping. As a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meeting. Per policy 01.5501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board, keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste, and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure, and I have a little time clock, so.
Thank you. Well, I want to start off by thanking the college for the visit, or the opportunity to speak, but I also want to start off by congratulating Dr. Namuwa for his contract renewal. I think Dr. Namuwa will come down at the end of his term as a trailblazer for Joliet Junior College and a trailblazer in the community. We truly are privileged to have him with us. He truly cares for the students, the staff, the community, and visitors. Everyone who steps foot in this community and campus has Dr. Namuwa by his side. Last meeting, I made comments about how the board was a little bit dysfunctional, I guess to call it. I talked about how a trustee had yelled at a student trustee, and how those actions are being portrayed throughout the college, and how yelling at such student trustee is yelling at the entire student body. Well, I went to class later that night, and then the next day, I watched the meeting, and every single comment that I made was just drifted off. The opposite happened in the meeting that I had left. I left the meeting with hopefulness that the board would change, and I think it'd gotten a little bit worse. Last meeting, we heard trustee comments regarding to pronouns, and the trustee had attacked students who have different pronouns and share different pronouns across campus, but I don't think the trustee realizes that everyone here has pronouns. And so when you attack a community, especially with pronouns, you attack the entire body of JJC. When a student stood up to speak and defend herself, and women all across campus, a trustee screamed at a student. A trustee silenced student voices. That should be the opposite, what you all should be doing with your office. You should be uplifting voices. You should be proud to share those different perspectives, and it's crazy that an elected official would do the exact opposite. And I think they need to keep in mind that election seasons are continuous, and everyone is watching. Everyone is watching, and this is voted on office. It is immensely embarrassing for JJC that when the entire community goes on Facebook or goes on the Shaw Local and are reading articles of the things that are happening here, for students that are wearing JJC apparel out of town, for students that have JJC lanyards, for students that have JJC backpacks or bumper stickers, it is embarrassing to wear that stuff when we have things happening like that here, when people are silencing student voices in the public. We should not be verbally attacking students, and I hope that the showing today shows the immense force that the students will have, and how we will not back down to those that are trying to silence minorities on campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Kathleen Bond. She would like to speak on peace and positivity.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a little tall. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Namuwa, Board of Trustees, and Cabinet members, students, colleagues, community members, and anyone that I may have left off. My name is Katie Bond, as my mom and dad would call me, Kathleen Bond, and I wear many hats. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I should have said that first, I'm sorry, honey. I'm a wife, I'm a mom, I'm a new grandma of a seven-month-old little boy, I'm a sister, I'm an aunt, I'm a 25-year community member, I'm a friend and a confidant to many in the JJC community, and I'm also the co-president of the TOSK Union here at JJC. I'm also a person who fights for injustice and fights against injustice. I am that friend that you want standing next to you when you're in trouble. I have been proudly employed at JJC for over nine years. The topic of my conversation tonight is peace and positivity. At JJC, we strive to foster a caring and friendly environment. We embrace diversity and inclusion, and our core values are the foundation of our community. These values are not just words. They are principles that guide our actions and interactions every day. They include respect and inclusion, integrity, collaboration, humor and well-being, innovation, quality and sustainability. I stand before you, a 25-year member of this community and a taxpayer in this district, to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees for your tireless efforts. On behalf of our students, community, staff, and faculty, I recognize that this is often a thankless unpaid role, requiring many nights and weekends away from your families. Please know that your dedication is deeply appreciated. It truly is. As representatives of your constituents, including myself, remember you have the power to represent diversity, inclusion, diversity of thought, and by extending compassion, knowledge, and kindness, you can transform negative opinions into positive ones. Remember, happiness can be found even in the darkest of times, if only one remembers to turn on the light, and I hope we all remember to turn on the light. Thank you for your time and for your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Alicia Brennan, and she would like to speak regarding Title IX.
Good evening, President Namuwa, members of the board, members of the cabinet and guests. My name is Professor Alicia Brennan. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a full-time tenured faculty member at JJC. In addition to my role as an educator, I served as co-advisor for the Pride Alliance and was co-presenter for Safe Zone. I'm here tonight to speak out against the harmful rhetoric that has been repeatedly displayed by trustee Lee and to highlight the negative impact it has on our students and our institution. As faculty, we operate under a core principle, students come first. Every decision and every action we take is centered on their well-being, success, and inclusion. Trustee Lee, it seems you have forgotten this. When you step through the doors of JJC as a trustee, your primary responsibility is to advocate for and support our students, not push divisive or inclusionary views. On October 16th, you made a statement that undermined the identities of some of our students. You stated regardless of if you are a they/them, there still is a man and a woman. This comment is damaging, inappropriate, and downright homophobic. Acknowledging someone's identity doesn't take away from anyone else's, it's about showing respect for all students, especially those who feel vulnerable. Your dismissal of a student during the same meeting, telling her, "Sweetie, you can come back next week," after interrupting her, was condescending and unacceptable. It's bad enough to be disrespectful to fellow board members, but to belittle a student is even worse. Our students should feel heard, supported, and respected by the very leaders who are meant to represent them. Your comments have instilled fear in our students, threatening their freedom of self-expression, so I stand here today as their voice. I have students that have had to drop a course because their professor refuses to use their chosen pronouns. Those students seek safety and acceptance within the walls of JJC. For many, this institution is the one place they can be themselves, but when their identities are dismissed or weaponized in public forums, they begin to lose trust in the institution that should protect them. This is not just about pronouns, it's about the very dignity and respect we owe our students. When we fail to honor their identities, we send a message that they don't belong and that that's unacceptable. Trustee Lee, your remarks contradict the inclusive values that JJC stands for, and they harm the very students we are here to serve. Our 24-27 strategic plan clearly emphasizes inclusivity and equity at every level of the institution. Furthermore, as a public institution of the state of Illinois, we must also adhere to the Illinois Human Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination based on characteristics like sexual orientation and gender identity. By ignoring these principles, we not only damage the fabric of our community, but also violate state law. It's essential to understand that refusing to use one person's incorrect pronouns is not a trivial matter. According to the National Institute of Health, this behavior marginalizes individuals and causes emotional harm, creating an unsafe environment for those already vulnerable. As an institution, we will not stand for that behavior. I am an out and proud lesbian, a tenured faculty member, and an educated woman. I've been misgendered, and while I can move past it, I would never diminish someone else's identity simply because it doesn't align with my own views. Our students deserve better. In closing, JJC is committed to creating an inclusive and supportive environment for all students. We must ensure our leadership reflects these values. Trustee Lee, your comments do not align with the mission of this institution, the community it serves, and the laws in place that protect our students. As a faculty member, I would request that you take the Title IX sensitivity training. I want to remind this board that when you step through these doors, it's always about the students first. Thank you.
The next person is Brenton Bishop from the Pride Alliance, who would like to speak about non-support and comments by trustees against LGBTQ.
I can't be attacking the trustee. That's in the policy. Nobody's holding us accountable. As a reminder, that's why we're in this particular position.
It was in the text. It was a response to how many board members made.
It's accountability.
She had the floor to make her comment, they had the floor to respond.
Yes, it's accountability.
They're running with their rights to come before us.
And if the meeting has not been going accordingly-
Thank you. Nice to see all of you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dear members of the Board of Trustees, I am proud that we share in our commitment to the success of every student. With our expansive experience, we recognize that academic achievement and greatness grow in places that feel safe, welcoming, and affirming. Together, we envision a campus where students feel empowered to bring their full might into the learning experience, confident that who they are will not only be accepted but celebrated, destined for the greatness that JJC stands for. Your passion to do what is necessary, what is best, and what is right, even in the face of adversity, is not only admirable, but it is integral. However, in light of recent events, I urge you to reflect on whether this passion is misguided. The values of respect, inclusion, collaboration, and humor and well-being lead us down the path of considering the role of gender-affirming practices. This includes the essential respect for each student's preferred pronouns as a foundation to fostering an inclusive environment that aligns with our mutual goal of student success. When students' identities are disregarded, specifically when their chosen pronouns are ignored, the effects are profound and damaging. This issue has recently impacted our own student trustee, who overwhelmingly and proudly represents their peers and models the leadership and commitment we aim to nurture. If the voices of our student leaders are invalidated in such a deeply personal way, we risk creating an environment where all students, especially those who are non-binary, gender non-conforming, or transgender, feel unsafe, unseen, and unsupported. It is not enough for us to promote inclusivity in words alone. We must enact and enforce policies and practices that reflect our dedication to each student's dignity. We must model our values. Using preferred pronouns is a fundamental form of respect, yet not doing so makes one thing terrifyingly clear, that we regard some identities as less legitimate. By embracing this incredibly simple yet impactful gesture, we can show not just gender non-conforming students, but every student that they are valued members of our community, worthy of the same respect and belonging as everyone else. Currently, this issue directly affects non-binary, gender non-conforming, and transgender students. However, the precedent set by disregarding their pronouns has deeper meanings and reverberates across the entire student body. When we choose not to validate the identities of entire student groups, we inadvertently send a message that personal identity is conditional here, a troubling idea that may eventually erode trust and create a campus of silence and censorship. By affirming each student's chosen pronouns, we have the power to stop this insidious message before it takes hold. In this way, we can live up to not only our goals of protecting our students, but also our obligation to ensure that each student feels safe to learn, contribute, and thrive. Sincerely, Pride Alliance.
The next speaker, Ash Klinder, wants to speak regarding Agenda Oitem Number Five Reports.
Hello. I'm here to speak about the previous Board meetings' trustee reports. I wanted to begin by clarifying that Emily, I and all of the other students who attended the previous Board meeting were not there to harass any trustees, but I was there to stick up for my friends. I've been disturbed by the actions of a certain trustee when talking to and interacting with the student trustee during JJC Board meeting discussions. While they maintain professionalism most of the time, during the times when professionalism is most important and cameras are rolling, trustees think it's appropriate to air dirty laundry, be blatantly hostile or passive aggressive, leave meetings early, or what I would say is at pointed times, make or sustain faces, and more and more and more. I love JJC, and I love the diverse student life that's on campus. It's allowed me to meet so many people with different backgrounds from my own, and I truly believe that that has been the greatest contributor in building my character here, especially the student trustees. They give perspective to the Board of what student life is like and what the most considerate students are thinking about. I believe some trustees do not respect the student trustees. In watching recent Board meetings, I have seen it. Something that is new to many people but is a basic respect is pronouns. I would like to ask the Board to try and use everyone's preferred pronouns, including but not exclusive to Trustee Queenie, who is very kind, not to correct you all or be any sort of angry every time you all frustratingly refuse to use "they". I'm not asking you to say sorry either. I know it's the learning curve, but try to use their preference the next time. It's a sign of respect. Empowering people is how we can serve the world best. It's how we can save the planet. And it's how community colleges can empower their community best. Definitely not by picking and choosing what constituents a trustee represents. You guys represent us all. JJC students, faculty and staff, thank you for being here today and thank you for having my back and for having the back of the students. That's all.
The next person who wants to speak is Juliana Aguilar regarding the temperature of the Board.
So, good afternoon, members of the Board. Julia Junior College is truly a unique institution, a place where I have felt safe, I have felt heard and I have felt valued by both the faculty and the diverse community of students from all backgrounds, religions and cultures. Many of us, like myself included, are first-generation college students navigating challenges that often feel insurmountable, whether from economic hardships, community violence, or the fear of stepping into the unknown. As I complete my final semester year, I reflect on how JJC has set a high standard for my future, but yet it is with deep disappointment that I stand before you today. The hostility displayed over recent Board meetings is deeply concerning. I am here not because I was invited by anybody on this Board and nor any campus organization, but because I am a student here at Julia Junior College. Our institution's vision to provide an environment that inspires acceptance, inclusion, mutual respect comes from the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Additionally, the 2024-2027 Strategic Plan Overview pledges to advocate for respect, inclusion, demonstrating courtesy and civility in every endeavor, promoting the diverse strengths of both students and employees. Sadly, these values have not been upheld by certain members of this elected Board, not only in last month's meeting, but in each meeting leading up to today. The treatment of our student trustee Ryan and the dismissive remarks directed at my fellow peers run counter to these principles. In the light of Donald Trump's recent reelection, we must recognize that national political decisions will impact our lives here on this campus. JJC has students who belong to communities affected by these political shifts, students who are not only pursuing academic goals, but also navigating their personal identities. We must ask ourselves, when these students face uncertainty outside of this campus, how will our institution respond? Will we stand with them, or will we allow colleges from a broader societal struggle seep into our campus? JJC has been a long place of inclusivity where students are encouraged by their authentic selves, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, cultural background. However, this mission will only be fulfilled if Board members continue to uphold the values of respect, acceptance and inclusion, especially in times where a political decision threatens to divide us all. If these core values cannot be upheld by this Board, then those who have failed to embody them should consider stepping down. We are at crossroads. The action taken or not taken at JJC will speak volumes about our commitment to supporting every member of this diverse community. Julia Junior College is a beacon of hope and opportunity as it has been for me. We must recommit to fostering an environment where all voices are heard and valued, ensuring JJC remains a sanctuary for growth, learning and support, a place where every student, regardless of background or identity, feels empowered to succeed. Thank you for your time.
The next person is Luke Galloway, and Luke wants to speak regarding the relationship between students and school administrators.
Hello, JJC community, President Nmua, the esteemed Board. I want to speak today about the student body and student administrations or school administrations relationship. I want to first introduce myself. I'm Luke. I'm a student leader on our campus. It's a pleasure and honor and a privilege to stand here as one of the many passionate voices of our students. I want to take us back to at the previous meeting. One of our trustees attacked the students and as well as our student trustee, accusing us of plotting against our inclusion with prominent figures of authority. I want to say, first of all, I wasn't asked by anyone to be here. As we're all aware from the previous meeting, the public comments are open for anyone from the public to voluntarily speak to the Board. I think with what's happened over the course of this semester, we've lost some perspective about how we can best serve each other. I think that the students and the Board can have a productive working relationship. I think we have the same goals. We want peace and prosperity and success for our students and staff. In one of my classes, we learned about stakeholder theory, this idea that one entity, our school, serves other entities. And the most important stakeholders of this Board are, have been and always will be, the students. You're elected to your positions by the surrounding community, but all the success indicators of this institution are measured based on the students. Some of our trustees have a positive perception of the students, and that feeling is shared likewise. Some are antagonistic. That's antithetical to our shared goals as an institution. I want to address worries about student activism. The simple fact of the matter is this: individual student leaders like me have been using their free speech rights to organize and protest, unaffiliated with our campus's established student organizations. I would also like to say to all the people listening to this statement, please understand, we the students are simply advocating for the strong and functional Board our school needs. The students are leading. We are organized, activated and advocating for change. And there are some who seek to undermine the students, our president and our school. This is where I address a specific trustee. She has provoked and attacked student attendees. She has prioritized a personal and political agenda above what's best for the school, particularly our vulnerable student populations. And in her public life, she previously ran for State Senate while serving on this Board as a pro-school choice, anti-LGBTQ, anti-mask mandate, anti-science candidate. That's on the public record. When interviewed by the Daily Herald, she declined to answer the majority of questions about pressing issues, only answering about pension plans and prior work experience. This shows a pattern of behavior of someone who has never upheld accountability or transparency to the public. Her beliefs run antithetical to the ideals and values of this institution, things like respect, inclusion, integrity, collaboration, human well-being, innovation, quality, sustainability, things we all swore to uphold and protect. So with all that said, I would like to ask that the trustee resigns from her position. The student voice will only get stronger, and I would strongly encourage the remainder of the Board to take whatever actions possible to support the student voice on this issue. What we need in this time is strength, stability and courage. Thank you.
The next person is Jacala Johnson, and Jacala is from Student Government and would like to speak on Student Government-specific address of the Board.
Hello, and I thank you for this time. I am here representing the Student Government in order to address recent comments directed at our organization. It has been alleged that attendees of the last meeting on October 16, 2024, were colluding with the Student Government to orchestrate a planned attack on a trustee, supposedly with the support of another trustee member and the president. To begin with, Student Government wants to clarify that no trustee member, faculty or staff has ever approached the Student Government with intentions to criticize or undermine another trustee. In addition, we, as a Student Government, are committed to transparency in our actions and will explicitly state if we are attending a trustee meeting or any similar event as an organization. While those certain members may actively attend such events by themselves, unless stated, they are only representing themselves. Every member of the Student Government holds their own beliefs, ideals and values, which may or may not align with one another, and we respect these differences within our team. While the Student Government was not affiliated with the students involved in the last meeting, we stand with every student who has shown up, will show up and considers showing up. It is disheartening to see that a moment students used to voice their beliefs was used to belittle and degrade not only them, but also the Student Government. The voices of everyone should be heard and valued, regardless of the scenario and roles involved. Guided by JJC's core values of equity and inclusion, we believe in ensuring that every student's voice is heard and respected. We also hope that the trustees, as leaders, will treat all students and their peers with the respect they deserve in order to reflect the values of leadership that our community expects. We, the Student Government and the trustees, are all here to represent and support the student body, and we should unite in this effort. Thank you for listening.
The next person is Kimberly Martinez, and she wants to address trustee behavior.
Good afternoon, anyone and everyone who has come. Wow, that's a lot of people. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Martinez. I am coming to you guys as the president of Latinos Unidos, historically one of the biggest and most active clubs on campus. I have a statement from our secretary, Leslie Valerio, as well as my own statement on trustee behavior. From Leslie, I have, "On October 16, 2024, JJC Board of Trustee Member Michelle Lee portrayed bitter and disrespectful behavior towards our JJC student body. As a student myself, I firmly believe that Michelle's behavior has no place in a committee dedicated to serving higher education. I am shocked and disgusted to see this blatantly immature behavior towards my peers. Michelle, if you are in a position where you cannot treat everyone you represent with respect, I suggest you resign immediately. Respect in our minds are given until it's shown that they can no longer have our respect. And at this point, you no longer have our respect." From my own statement, I also serve as president of the Collegiate Club Council, which also utilizes Robert's Rules of Order. And the only thing I can say on that is if I displayed any type of behavior at the CCC meeting that is shown sometimes in this Board of Trustee meetings, I would be released immediately from my position. I will not have a stipend. I would be released immediately, as well as taken off probably as Latinos Unidos president. If we cannot show respect to everyone, we shouldn't be in a position of leadership. Thank you.
The next person is Stephanie Domenico, and she would like to address comments made at the end of the last meeting.
Hold on one second. Point of order. So, it's per subject? No, no. I beg to correct you. The first gentleman that stood up praised Dr. Nmua. He pointed out board dysfunction. He asked us to improve the Board. He's the only one who done that. That's three minutes, so that is gone. I have so far 14 minutes directly related to trustee Lee. I have three minutes that from the previous person who asked for support for the student body. She was requesting that the Board supports. So I'm telling you, I'm keeping track. I got notes for everyone who got it. Okay, well, don't call me out on it.
No, I'm not calling you.
We are not past the time.
I'm asking you.
You may proceed.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephanie Domenico. I work in the I-Campus Department, and I am also the Chair of the LGBTQ Subcommittee. This was a letter that I had written. Dear JJC trustees, I am writing because I was very disturbed by remarks made by trustee Lee at the end of the last Board meeting dated October 16, 2024. Starting at Hour Two, at the 14-minute mark, trustee Lee brought up a concern about pertinent legal issues which appeared to be concerning the removal of gender-specific language on scholarships, a move that seems to be in keeping with the ruling by the Department of Education in April of this year concerning Title IX and language used on college documents. Her remarks then devolved into some very derogatory comments that seemed to target not only student trustee Queenie, but our entire LGBTQ plus community at JJC. These comments were not befitting of the JJC core values of respect and inclusion, and it sickened me to hear them. In a college full of diversity in every possible form, the fact that such a powerful representative of the school would publicly demean any portion of the student body is most disturbing. In an article in US News dated November 16, 2023, "The role of a trustee is to listen to every constituency but to be beholden to none." The comments made by trustee Lee did not fit that standard, indicating a particular bias. If she feels so negatively about one portion of our population, it's hard to believe she doesn't harbor negative feelings about other populations within the school. If a trustee cannot put aside their personal beliefs of politics to consider the welfare of all their students, then I don't believe they should continue to serve the school. While I understand that she is an elected official and cannot be removed, I would at the very least expect her to offer an apology to all of the staff and students whom she offended. Thank you.
The next speaker is Emily Powers, who would like to speak regarding student representation in Robert's Rules of Order.
Hello, Board of Trustees and attendees. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard. My name is Emily Powers. I go by she/her. And I would first like to apologize for my own interruption of the October 16 meeting, though I do not apologize for what I had been trying to say. Many members of the audience or those watching from home may not be familiar with the Robert's Rules of Orders, so their only exposure to this procedure would be through the past behaviors and patterns of speech exhibited by those during the meetings. So this is a call for accountability to all Board of Trustees members and attendees, including myself, as well as a reminder to please lead by example. As a student leader, I'm involved in many areas of the campus. My first introduction to this Board was when I was invited to read the February 14 Women's History Month proclamation, something I believe is important. I am proud to be a woman, especially working and studying in what was until recently considered a male-dominated field. The opportunities I have been given have been made possible by those who fought for the equality of women. But equality is not a right only reserved for men or women. Equality means equality, equal opportunity and inclusion for all members of our student body. And the student body has voted on and chosen Ryan to best represent us and to be our voice and advocate for the equal, diverse and accurate representation for all students. When our student trustee is disrespected or silenced, the student body is disrespected and silenced. We stand with Ryan because they stand for us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Krumsky from the United States Patriots Society. The next speaker is Michael Kremsky from the United States Patriot Society.
Good evening. Before I speak, I'd like to, Mr. Chair, ask if something I brought today to hand out to the trustees be handed out. I asked prior to the meeting starting, and they're still here, so I would ask that those trustees have that in hand before I speak.
Is this okay with our legal counsel?
It's okay with the United States Declaration of Independence and Constitution.
Can you fix the mic so we can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Mike Kremsky, and I am the president of a local chapter of the United States Patriot Society. I am here tonight to agree with the board members who do not want gender language removed from JJC scholarships. I have handed out a copy of the U.S. and Illinois constitutions to each board member tonight. You have all taken an oath to uphold those documents, and they must be the guide for how you, this board, operate. That is your primary job. America is a republican form of government, per Article 4, Section 4 of the U.S. Constitution. All representatives of all government bodies are bound by their state and federal constitution. The preamble to the Illinois Constitution establishes the purpose for the formation of the state, and I handed that out to you this evening. It's in the beginning, and it reads, and I'll read this part due to time. "We, the people of the State of Illinois, grateful to Almighty God for civil, political, and religious liberty which he permits us to enjoy seeking his blessing upon our endeavors, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the State of Illinois. Everything within the Illinois Constitution is established out of the gratitude to God so that we may seek his blessing. Our Creator, who is the same Creator of the Bible, who is the same Creator of the Illinois Constitution, established and appreciates the difference between male and female, will not bless a people who fail to do the same. There is no good reason to remove gender language from the scholarships." Now, at the start of this meeting, one of the trustees asked to speak in a public comment, so I would like to remind the board and Mr. Chair that the Attorney General has already ruled on this, that board members are members of the public, and they do have the right to speak as the public. So I would suggest, and I recommend, that this board allow that to happen. Thank you.
The next speaker is Molly Kremsky. She didn't indicate what she was going to speak about.
Hi, my name is Molly Kremsky. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a mother of seven. I'm a college graduate, and I'm a certified public accountant. But none of those things that I've experienced have helped me understand why anybody would want to remove gendered language from scholarships. I've been following the situation remotely, and I'm ready to make a statement. Title IX was introduced before I was born to give women equal opportunities in all areas of secondary education. Its original intent seemed rooted genuinely in civil rights. And now, almost 50 years later, its purpose is being twisted to do exactly the opposite. Why, Mr. President, are you so willing to take scholarships, some offered by women's organizations, away from women? Why won't you fight for our daughters? Why, when there are so many legal exemptions established that you could easily take advantage of for endowments and affirmative action-type scholarships? What happened to protecting women? Has the left abandoned the equal opportunities made possible by the early feminist movement? The fact that men are now being allowed to participate in women's sports and change in women's locker rooms adds a concrete layer of validity to my suspicions that Title IX is no longer being used to protect legitimate civil rights. It seems to me that the real root of the issue, the real reason a civil rights law is being twisted inside out, is that officially using binary gender language undeniably refutes the existence of the 70-some other genders introduced under the current administration. I feel deeply for people who have been led down the path of gender dysphoria. It deeply saddens me that we allow their confusion to be exploited, and I thank God that we are but months away from the commencement of a healthy, healing process in this nation. Mr. President, please do not take any further action without the required consent of the College Board and the blessings of the Foundation Board. It is not advantageous to the community or to the college to upset the donors who provide much-needed financial support for the people, both men and women, who attend Joliet Junior College. Ms. Lee, there's a reason why you are here in this room and in that seat. Stay strong.
The next speaker is Susanna Abari, who has just addressed the board.
Good evening. I am Susanna Abari, Joliet City Council, and I represent District 5, which this building is situated in. My pronouns are councilwoman, she, or her. Today, I want to take a moment to address two crucial aspects of our shared humanity: the respect we show for each other's identities and the dignity we extend to each other as well as elected officials. And a student trustee is an elected official. First and foremost, respecting people's preferred pronouns is a fundamental way to affirm their identity. Pronouns are deeply personal. They are tied to how individuals see themselves in this world. By using the correct pronouns, we create an inclusive environment where everyone feels seen and valued. Let's remember that simple gesture of respect can foster compassion and understanding among us all. Secondly, showing respect for elected officials is essential in maintaining a healthy democratic process. When they speak, they represent the voices of many, and leaving your seat while they're addressing us can be perceived as dismissive and disrespectful. Instead, let us demonstrate our commitment to civic dialogue, listening attentively, engaging thoughtfully, and expressing our opinions respectfully. To the LGBTQIA students and their families, let me just say, we hear you, we see you, we love you. To the board, you do not get to only serve the straight students of this college. You serve every student in this college. You serve all students. I'm a lifelong ally, so if my words sting, let them sting. Let us, in conclusion, strive to honor both individual identities through the use of preferred pronouns and the officials who serve us, creating a community to build a mutual respect and understanding. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is David Lozano, and he would like to address the board's misconduct.
Hello, board. How are we doing today? Good to see you again. Hello, audience. My name's David Lozano, former student trustee. I served on the board, as trustee Queenie once did. I come here today to really show my disturbance, and I condemn the actions of trustee Lee. Yeah, wow. I watched the video five times, and I was just shocked at the amount of disrespect that was displayed here. And, wow, yeah. I don't even have words for it, really. And then, two students in the audience were disrespected. That doesn't flow with me. No, 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 no. So what I'd like to say is this: I know we've always been, we haven't been the most functional board. Back when I was a student trustee, I had to deal with a lot of bullying hostility from Maureen Broderick. But, you know, the thing, and we all know it too, but I would just ask that, please, be respectful. Let's try and work for everyone here. We're all here, as you can see, and we want to work collaboratively, and please just have some respect. Thank you.
At this time, Karen. We have reached a 20-minute subject limit on any comments associated with trustee Lee, so at this point, if any other public comments are going to address that, I have to ask them to withhold. They're still able to come up and speak, just not addressing trustee Lee.
Okay. The next speaker is Sean Miller, and he wanted to speak regarding the previous meeting.
Hello, everyone. Hope you're having a good evening. I came here last month to voice how my sense of pride in attending this school had diminished and turned into embarrassment and shame. And I must say, after seeing the full meeting that happened last month, that shame has turned to anger and frustration. I must ask, if you are meant to serve your constituency, who is your constituency but the mothers, fathers, aunts, uncles, grandparents, and for our continuing education people, brothers, sisters, and children? That you continue to, disrespect is a soft word, contempt, you hold this student body in contempt as you continue to show through your conduct? And this is not pointed at trustee Michelle Lee, not individually. Yeah, the conduct has been unacceptable, and certainly the next election will reflect that. Thank you.
The next one is Destiny Zimerson, who wanted to address scholarships.
Hi, my name is Destiny Zimerson. I'm a new student. Sorry if I stutter. I am autistic, and talking in front of people is hard. I'm questioning if I should continue my higher education at this college next year because I feel like I'm not properly being represented. I'm completely disheartened with the removing of the term "men" and "women" from the scholarships, especially since JJC was one of the first colleges to accept women. Scholarships are very valuable to women, especially women of color, primarily because they provide access to higher education, which often can be led to improved employment opportunities and social empowerment. Women only make up 29.2% of the STEM workforce out of 146 nations. And in order to get more women in those fields, especially women who may not be able to afford college, we need scholarships for women to be able to partake in those fields. I, as someone who wants to partake in the mechanical engineering field, it is very disheartening when there is not as many women as you, and there's only men in the field, especially when you have trauma from those men hurting you in the past, so when you're working with them, it is very uncomfortable. I had to leave a job recently because of that. FEMA workers, but there's still a troubling imbalance in the STEM, in the STEM work, sorry, there's still a troubling imbalance in gender in the STEM workforce. A lot of women face challenges when pursuing STEM. For instance, women represent, sorry, only, that 29.9 is only senior workers. 12.4% are only, are seesuit roles, organizations, governments, educational institutions, and larger scientific and technological, technological community must work together to remove barriers and prevent women from advancing in STEM. We must work together to prevent, we must work together to remove barriers that prevent women from advancing in STEM. In one way to help, in one way to help, in one way to help remove those barriers is having scholarships for women who want to be in STEM. In the past few years, women have been going to college more, normally for medical, law, and psychology, which is amazing, and women have been, women have, it is amazing. Women have, that, women have been starting to go to school. I don't understand why we need to take a step back when we have been improving so far. And as for the comments about homophobia, I know we're not supposed to bring up trustee Lee, but when, I have a personal relationship with trustee Lee, and when I came out to her, she was nothing but accepting of me. So I would just, I think that she does have a way of saying things that may offend some people, but I don't believe that that can contribute to homophobia. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andy Neal. Andy, you had indicated you wanted to speak on the tax levy. Do you want to wait till that public comment section? Okay, it's later in the agenda. The last one is Michelle Lee.
Mr. Attorney?
It's my position that as a trustee, she does not have the right to make a public comment. She is, she has trustee comments. She can speak at any time on anything that's on the agenda throughout the entire meeting, the right, a right that the public does not have under the policies of this board or the Robert's Rules of Order.
Unless she resigns, and then she would be a community member.
Please be advised, this is now the second violation of my First Amendment right in your official capacity as a legal representative of this Board of Trustees.
Point of order, you do not have the microphone or the floor.
Any further violation on your part as a representative will result in me taking the necessary legal action to remedy this gross violation of your oath of office.
Point of order, Chair. She does not have the floor.
An attorney admitted to the Illinois Bar Association up to and including filing formal complaint with the Illinois Attorney Registration and disciplinary commission.
Trustee Lee, you have privilege to be on this board. You are privileged by elected to be on this board.
As well as filing the necessary legal action to provide restitution by you to me for violating my rights. That being said, as in your official capacity as a representative of this board, of trustees, you have infringed on my allotted.
You have opportunity to speak at this board.
You have infringed on my rights, and on my time allotted by board policy to public speakers, I reclaim the balance of my time. Thank you. I value students' voices and the right to public comment. It's your time to speak.
Point of order, trustee Lee. You have an opportunity to speak from your seat.
Last month, at the October regular meeting during trustee updates, which is my time to speak, I was first interrupted by our student trustee and then a group of students that had addressed being members of the student government during public comment. I responded to the students interrupting me by stating, "This is not public comment. If you would like to address the board, you can come back next month." Sweetie, as stated by trustee Broderick, the chair is responsible for controlling the meeting and should have stopped this behavior as our policy states. I understand I have offended some, but I in no way belittled the students or the student government. I stated a fact about our policy and expressed my concern that this behavior was being encouraged and organized with the help of board members and possibly the administration.
Point of order. Trustee Lee.
This is a fact. In September, at our regular board meeting, our student trustee announced during student trustee updates that through student government, they would be initiating a speech to address the temperament of the board and how the students felt about the lawsuit against the college. My concern that this behavior was being encouraged and organized with the help of members of the board is a fact. As our student trustee is a member of this board, it would then be logical that the students who showed up to speak at the October meeting, who admitted being involved in student government, were influenced from our student trustee's opinions of the temperature of the board's serious involvement.
Tell her to sit down. No. No, you have the authority to speak from your seat. Yes, I do.
No, the chair. Her procedure is a chair.
She ignored me when I addressed her.
Keep talking. Don't give up.
She ignored when I tried to address her.
Keep talking.
It's up to you to maintain order in the room.
Yes.
No, she has an opportunity to speak. No, it's not. No, it's not.
It's no violation. She's not speak.
This is for public comment. This is not for address back and forth. So we'll move on. Next speaker.
That's it.
She's an elected official. Yeah, she has time to speak from her seat. There's a time for trustees to speak.
The AG has already ruled on it. Good night. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Are there any more public comments? Item 1.5, we have a moment of silence. Dr. Numul.
Chairman and trustees and members of the JJC community, I'm asking you to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Mark Custer, retired JJC professor of 29 years in the Ag and Horticulture Department. Helen Biddle, mother to Stacy Perry, a specialist in our accounts payable area. Jacques Smith, father-in-law to Audrey Finkel, professor of Health and Public Services.
Thank you, Chairman.
Item 1.6, selected reports. 1.6.1, the Finance Audit Report.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Anthony Serbini, audit principal with Sikkich. Thank you for the invitation to be here this evening and present the results of our audit of the college as of and for your fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. A few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to present to the Finance Committee, go through a detailed review of the annual comprehensive financial report for the college, as well as other key information incorporated in that. This evening, I'll just provide you some brief summary comments related to that. We've issued several reports as a result of our audit. The annual comprehensive financial report, this is your audited financial statements, includes information on your required reporting to the Illinois Community College Board, ICCB, as well as required reporting on the enrollment data for the college. We've also issued our single audit report. The single audit report covers the college's spending of federal award dollars, our auditors' communication to the Board of Trustees, and then finally, the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, or the GATA, consolidated year-end financial report required by the state of Illinois. Pleased to present to the chair and trustees that we've issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the college's financial statements, the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. In our opinion, the financial statements of the college are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also issued separate reports on that enrollment data, as well as the ICCB reports. Pleased to present that those were unmodified opinions as well. Within the single audit report, the federal reporting there, we issued an unmodified opinion on the college's compliance with your major federal programs. And finally, in accordance with government auditing standards, an unmodified opinion there as well. So all in all, very clean reporting for the college, unmodified opinions in all the reports that we issue. From the single audit standpoint, just a couple highlights for you there. The college expended approximately $22.4 million in federal awards during fiscal year 2024. 18.7 million of those programs were tested as major programs this year. Pleased to present to the chair and the board that we had no findings as part of that process there. This is a, an incredible accomplishment, particularly for the number of major programs that we looked at as part of this, and the volume of testing that we did, being able to ensure that the college's financial reporting and federal financial reporting is, is done accurately is no small feat. This is a, student financial aid is a program in and of itself, is a 1,400-plus-page handbook with rules and regulations on that. So again, to be able to have no findings or no non, no compliance issues there is a testament to the college's team. Pleased to also report, we had no audit adjustments adjusting journal entries, nor did we have any recommendations from a management letter standpoint for the college this year. A few items to note for you within the audit report itself and the annual comprehensive financial report. Strongly encourage you, as you look through that document, to read the transmittal letter, as well as a management's discussion and analysis. These provide a high-level overview of the college's operations, results of those operations for fiscal year 2024, as well as information on why those figures have changed from one year to the next. So take some context to a lot of the information in there as well. All in all, the college remains in a strong financial position, both from a short-term and long-term perspective, as of June 30th, 2024. Commends you for instituting policies and procedures from a financial standpoint to ensure that you're able to continue to oversee and fund the operations of the college on a, on a strong basis for that. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Karen?
Thanks so much, Anthony, for that presentation. Appreciate it. I just wanted to add that this achievement is a testament to the diligent work and commitment of our teams. Congratulations to the accounting team, led by Jeff Heap and Daryl Langlios, for the unqualified reports, and for once again, receiving the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from both the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Finance Officers Association. Additionally, a well-deserved congratulations goes to our financial aid team, led by Deanna Hogan, for their third consecutive year of a clean financial aid audit. This accomplishment is especially significant, given the ongoing changes with the FAFSA, our transition to the new ERP system, and the evolving regulatory landscape. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication to excellence in financial stewardship.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ask anybody else questions.
Do you have any questions?
I'll leave something. When we were at, a while back, there was a financial committee meeting, and it was one of the best meetings that I've ever seen, because if you went down the chart, it was green light, green light, green light, JJC's awesome, green light, green light. And that was incredible. So I wanted to thank you so much for coming, Anthony. I was, I was, I kind of pushed to make sure you came here and gave us some, some good news for the institution. So thank you very much, and thank you to everybody that worked so hard on this. It really is impressive that JJC is this good. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Trustee Queenie. Trustee Garcia. Trustee Alicia Morales.
Yes, along with trustee Stanworski, thank you for, I attended that policy financial committee meeting on October the 30th. So I won't give a report later on when it comes time to give that report, but thank you for addressing my specific questions on financial aid, because as Vice President Kissel mentioned earlier, financial aid has gone through so many changes with the FAFSA and the fact that we have no findings, and with us going through a new reset in our ERP, we have, you presented an annual comprehensive financial report with no findings and no adjustments. So thank you for answering all of my particular questions about the SEOG, the Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grants, and the questions I had about the work-study jobs, that nothing is being compromised, everything our financial aid staff is doing a great job, and thank you for providing a good report. Thank you.
Trustee Broderick?
My question is regarding reserves. Went off, sorry. My question is regarding reserves. Where are we with the reserve situation? Is there any concern that we need to elevate or be concerned about doing anything with using these reserves, just from your financial position?
Sure. From a perspective overall, I think the college's reserves would align with what we see from an industry benchmark for other Illinois community colleges for that. You have approximately, when you factor out the college insurance program and the required reporting related to that, that came into effect several years ago there. College reports positive net position in all three categories. So there's three categories it breaks into. Your net investment in capital assets, restricted amounts that are restricted for various programs based on the funding source there, and then your overall, your unrestricted net position, which is kind of your indicator in terms of what you have available for future spending, future programming, things of that nature there. That amount approximately is about $80 million, the unrestricted portion there. When you look at the unrestricted piece, less the college insurance program piece there. So I would say in terms of that, no concerns from an audit standpoint in terms of what those reserves are. Those appear to be, you could say, in line with what we would see from an industry standpoint.
So you're seeing it worthy in line with the other community colleges, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Lee?
No comments. Thank you for your report.
Trustee Harris?
No comments, but thank you very much for the thorough report, and we're very thankful and grateful to have a great team, our finance committee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 1.6.2, the Faculty Union Report. Dr. Bob?
Thank you for the opportunity. Can you hear him better?
Yep.
Chairman Mazinski, Dr. Numul, board, thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening, as always. A couple of quick things before I get into some more meaty comments. I do want to congratulate Laura Egner and Donna Katula, particular full-time faculty, those are the ones I know best. They were great faculty members. They're not good faculty members. They were great faculty members. And I, we will, this institution will be, will struggle to replace them. I also want to thank the financial people for, again, another great report for the year. And then I'm going to address something that, I've been listening to a lot of stuff this evening, and my message is probably going to be a little different than some. But there were a couple of things that I really wanted to say, you know, I wanted to listen to you and I want to hear you, but then they devolved into political attacks, which I know I'm talking about the students, I'm talking about the other speakers. A couple of them turned into political attacks. So it makes it more difficult, obviously, to, to listen and feel comfortable, but that's what I'm going to preach tonight. First of all, thank you to all the students who are still here and who, and who have already left. I am, you know, so proud to teach at an institution that has students like this. Students who are engaged, willing to stick up for their own, even if they're different than they are. And what's even more impressive is the ability for them to articulate that in this kind of a setting. These are amazing students. And, and it sounds like I'm sucking up, but that's fine. That's fine. I'll do that. I had to miss the last meeting, as you know, because I had to do an AFT thing that night, but I was immediately approached after the meeting about what had transpired during the meeting and very, by a number of people who were here at the meeting, and about their concerns. Initially, I was angry. I mean, just angry. Angry that students felt disrespected, angry that they were made to feel unsafe at this institution, and angry that at least one student was brought to tears, and angry that there was an attempt to intimidate students and shut them up. So much so that, it's my understanding, the police chief had to be asked to stay late in order to make sure that something didn't happen. I spent a lot of my time in the last week, couple of weeks, three weeks, being angry, but that's not my message tonight. I had a notebook, notebook full of notes, a notebook full of notes. And a lot of little pithy turns of phrase, et cetera, that I was going to share with you, you know, I was going to get a couple of laughs, but this isn't a time for laughter. I've decided that's not the answer, and it's not the example that I want to set for these students who have set a great example for us. So here goes. We all know that for more than a year, far more than a year, the board meetings have been tense, almost unbearably so. We've had recriminations flow back and forth. We've had multiple motions to censor two board members, and we've seen anger manifest itself in harsh language that frankly is not suited for this body. We've watched board members walk into the room with scowls on their faces and walk out of the room with scowls on their faces. We've seen those faces turn red in anger. We've seen the long stares at other board members and people in the audience, and we've heard all the harsh words. But tonight, that's the anger part. Tonight, I want to appeal to everybody's, to quote Lincoln, better angels. It's time that we turn the temperature down in this room. Right now, it appears we're mimicking what's happening across the country, okay? Where people in the same families can't speak to each other, where people can't go to Thanksgiving dinner and, and share food with somebody because they're afraid that they're going to get into a violent argument at the dinner table. That's happening in this room, okay? JJC is supposed to be a family, okay? We're supposed to be the family that listens to each other, okay? People too often have ideological differences, and instead of discussing them rationally and listening to the other side, I mean, listening, really listening, not waiting for your turn to talk, listening. Too often, we take the easy route of demonizing those who disagree with us. We condescend to them and label them stupid, or naive, or, quote, less than, right? That has to stop, not only in a greater society, but it has to stop here in this room. When I look at these students, I know it's a cliche, but I see the future. I truly see the future. And based on what I heard tonight, did I disagree with a couple of comments? Sure, but they sure as heck had the right to say what they had to say, and I agree with 99% of it, okay? But if what I've heard here tonight is, is, is any measure, the future's in great hands. They are setting the example in this room. They have been the adults in this room, okay? I've heard the word constituency used, and it was brought up earlier by a couple of people in these meetings over, every now and then, oh, I need to represent my constituents. Well, guess what? These are your constituents. These are the people who we're here for. I would state unequivocally, okay, that these are the people we need to be most, most concerned about. Without them, and the students before them, and the students are going to come next year and a year after and a year after, we're sitting on farmland, okay? This is farmland. Maybe a dying 1970s-style mall, okay? Maybe a parking lot with Valvoline station, okay? We're not here, we're not in one of the best and finest academic institutions in this state, and we're here because of them and those who precede them. Their presence here gives everybody in this room purpose, okay? Everybody in this room gives purpose because of the students. It also gives us pretty damn good jobs, okay? And I thank them for that, even if I don't know, and here's where I'm going to be funny. Even if I don't always agree with every one of them on every subject, as I always tell them, you have every right to be wrong, you know? So, and that's what we all should be saying. So with that, I hope that going forward, we all can start to listen more, truly listen more, particularly to those we disagree with, because it's easy to listen to people who we agree with, okay? Clearly, we have some work to do on that, and that was demonstrated again this evening, okay? But if we can do that, if we can get this board and the public reputation of this institution back on the right track, right where it should be, we must, we may just set an example for people across this region who care about us and start listening, who maybe they start listening to their neighbors, the ones who are running, who have the Trump flags and the others have the Harris flags, okay? And start listening to their neighbors before they choose to demonize them. And who knows? Who knows? Maybe, everything has to start small. So, so maybe we will start a trend. Maybe it'll spread. I sincerely hope so. With that, I will end my comments for this evening. Again, I appreciate always the opportunity to address you, and this may be the last time I get a chance to do that. So take care of yourselves. Peace going forward. Bye.
Good evening, President, Board, and all the visitors that are here tonight. I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who made the effort to be here and to speak tonight, on both sides. to speak tonight, on both sides, because that's what a college is all about, is listening. I was at, I've been at every meeting this year so far, and I am troubled. And so over the last week, I went back to the roots of JJC. The first thing that I did is I looked for our mission. Our mission is to strengthen our community, to inspire learning and to transform lives. Our vision is that JJC be the first choice for learning, working, cultivating pathways to prosperity. Our goals and objectives are value, to value and cultivate diversity, to connect and engage students, and to support equitable access, growth, and connection for them. Continually in our mission statement, we reference student enrollment and support. We strive to be supportive and collaborative in our work environment and in our student learning environment. We want to retain and develop our students and our employees. We want to encourage our student success and our institutional effectiveness. I thought those were some pretty amazing words, and everyone who's sitting here today on this board voted for those on June 14th. You approved them. I didn't take the time to see whether or not each of you individually voted for them because that strategic mission passed, which means the majority voted for them. The word constituents has been used in many of the meetings that we've been to, and as a formerly elected official, as an HOA elected official, as a almost 40-year teacher, as a union president and board member, your constituents, once you are elected, is everyone. It does not fall only on the constituents that elected you. You might think that at first, because you got elected, but then you start to realize. When I first ran for my first board, I ran because I saw an issue that I wanted corrected. And when I got on the board, the first thing that I learned was that my single issue was my issue. It wasn't the issue necessarily of the board or the constituency. It could be brought into that, but it was not that alone, that as an elected official, I had made a commitment to every one of my constituents, whether I agreed with them or not. The college is for the students. As has been said, none of us would be here if it weren't for the students. Our first responsibility, all of us, each and every one of us who is employed here or who has volunteered or been elected to work here and work with them, our first concern is our students. We do have an amazing student body. I have been privileged to be able to work with them these last several years. One of the other things that I read through when I was looking at what are the board responsibilities, I knew what I thought they were, having served on a board before, but the one that stuck out most to me was your commitment that you agreed to, to work with civility in a spirit of harmony, mutual respect, and cooperation, regardless of your difference of opinion. And one of those others that is very important, especially on a board, and I know this has been very hard for me when I've been on a board sometimes, is to uphold the final decision of the majority. Even if you don't agree, you uphold the final decision of the majority, because that's what you do as a board. That's what you commit to as a board. I would ask, on behalf of all of the students and behalf of our entire JJC community, which extends out, as has been mentioned, to brothers, sisters, grandmas, grandpas, everyone, every single one, that we extend respect to one another, that we not argue and bring down our community with those arguments. Those things that should be left in private session in, in boards should stay there, and those things that should be brought publicly be brought there. And while one of the other notes that was made in the board constitution, if you will, was to allow for vigorous debate, but in doing so, to do it respectfully. That is what your entire constituency has asked for today, from all of you, from all of us. And I would support that. And I believe I speak on behalf of the adjunct union that we too support that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.6.4, the JJC Foundation Report. Kristi Mulvey.
This is on one. Okay, yeah. Is she on? Is she muted? No. Can we come back to her? Oh, they're calling her. Okay, they're calling.
You want to come back to Kristi? We'll come back to the JJC Foundation Report when she's available. We'll move to item 1.6.5, Buildings and Grounds Committee Report.
Chairman, Kristi won't be giving her report.
Okay. All right. Trustee Stanborski.
Hello, everybody. Today, I had my very first Buildings and Grounds Meetings Committee meeting, which was excellent. I chaired it, so it was quite a lot of fun. There was a lot to address, and first, I would like to thank the students for coming out here. Hi, student government, how's it going? I was one of you like a year ago, so thank you so much for coming out tonight. For this, everything we do here at JJC is for the students, and Buildings and Grounds is pretty, pretty direct. It's very direct on the lives of the students. So there's a couple of things that I think you guys are going to be very glad to hear in here, so listen, listen very closely. There's some stuff that I was looking around when I was a student that are in here and I'm very glad about, so this is for everybody. So in the Buildings and Grounds meeting, we just had a couple of quick things that happened. The closeout, we were replacing the IT service room. In design, one of the things that we're doing is we're doing repainting of the exterior, you know, in the corners of the building, J Building's one and A Building two, how some of the corners are a little darker. A lot of that stuff's going to get cleaned up here soon, so JJC will be sparkling white once again. And there's going to be parking lot improvements, there is going to be, we talked about the Honors College in there, and the automotive exhaust. In construction, we have the Vet Tech addition, we have the AHU replacement, we have the Building H8VAC unit replacement, and we have the Mental Health and Wellness Center that's currently under construction in lower level J. So that's an excellent project going through. And we also have a couple of project bids. We have the, we have tank and irrigation piping, interior painting, and some stuff on the board agenda for building schedule, Buildings and Grounds schedule. Other than that, I would like to thank Rick and Pat for an excellent job putting this together, and I'd also like to thank Karen Kissel for helping me out, giving me an annotated guide, so, and thank you, Donna, as well. And that would be all for my report unless I'm missing something.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Can I ask something?
Sure, yes.
I was at the open house, which was great. We had a good turnout, and I got up to the fourth floor, and it looks like the fourth floor needs some renovation, so I'm going to make that as a comment because the ladies were, showed me the whole floor, and I guess that's a good area of income, from what I'm understanding, too. So I'm hoping that we can do something to improve the classroom environments and the area up there, so I just thought I'd mention it, too.
Cool, yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Now, that, that sounds like, that sounds like an excellent proposition, so. Any other comments on this and any other discussion?
I was at the meeting with you. I just want to add just some, an update that we did get regarding the mental health space, since, you know, I know you mentioned it's in construction. There are plans and hopes that they will be able to get all the construction finished in early January to hopefully be able to have that space available and open and operational and by the end of January, early February, for students and members of the community who are looking to use the mental health space, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Item 1.6.6, Trustee Garcia Guillen with the Board Policy Committee Report.
Yes, thank you. So our Board Policy Committee actually met on October 30th, and we were able to review several policies. In front of you, you will have 14 policies that are up for first reading. The first one is going to be 0.10.00, Officers of the Board. For this policy, we added some language about good standing, and you're going to notice that in terms of what is the definition of a community trustee who happens to be in good standing. We also have policy 0.1.11.00 that talks about the trustee development. That is, just cleaning up the language about what are some of the required trainings that policy that our board trustees need to be able to take on. Additional policies is the board travel. The board travel is going to be 0.1.40.00. That one, again, cleans up the language and adds the definition of what is a trustee that happens to be in good standing. We also have the policy 0.1.41.00, that is, the travel budget. This one is consistent with the previous policies that we had mentioned about a trustee that happens to be in good standing and what that actually entails. Other items that we have is 0.1.45.00, Meetings of the Board. This one, again, cleans up the language about the definition of how participants or trustees can actually participate in the meeting. And we also have additional policies on your board and your book that you are able to take a look, but they're going to be up for first reading. Trustee Queenie, anything that you would like to add, and then Trustee Harris.
I believe you've covered everything. I just want to thank.
I just focused on some of them.
Yeah, and I know we'll go into the first readings, talking about the policies from old business to new business tonight. Thank you to everybody for helping with getting that meeting held and helping to move these policies, and I hope that we can, you know, have some positive discussion tonight and discourse regarding those policies among the board tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Harris?
No, you did cover it all. I'm just happy to get this moved forward.
Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Item 1.6.7, the Finance Committee Report. Trustee Morales.
Sure, as I mentioned previously, when our auditor came and gave the report, we covered everything at that point. I don't, I was a member, I chaired that committee along with Trustee Stanborski, and I don't have anything further to add unless Trustee Stanborski would like to add anything else.
No, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.6.8, the President's Report. Dr. Mu.
All right, Chairman, thank you so much, and trustees of the board, thank you for the opportunity to, you know, share some of our many successes. And typically, I'd give my traditional upbeat report celebrating those successes, but, you know, I need to just take a moment to acknowledge, you know, students today especially. So will the students please rise? I can think of all the things I was doing when I was your age, being at a board meeting to stand up for what you believe, what is right, what is just, was not one of those things. So I just want to acknowledge your courage and for being here tonight, and like this is what JJC is all about. Thank you so much. So those hearts are a little heavy, and our minds are racing as we sort of think about, you know, what tonight means for JJC and the future. You know, I'll go through the upbeat, but I promise, I promise, that I will acknowledge more specifically some of the things that were raised today, and in part, ironically, to celebrate that we are in fact number one in the nation when it comes to what happens here at JJC in the form of these two awards. But wait, wait, I'll get there. I typically start with an enrollment update, Chairman Bzinski, as we approach the end of the semester here, there are certainly some things to celebrate. Most notably, dual credit is up 15.89%. Overall headcount is up 6.62%. Credit hours are up 5.66%, and we now have nearly 6,000 students in dual credit. Last year, of course, we set the record at close to 17,000 credit hours in dual credit for Fall '23. We approached 20,000 credit hours due to 12 by 12 by 12. And I just want to take a moment, you know, this is due in large part to, of course, the apparatus we've created, resourced, and added to since we've been at this, but I also want to recognize the support of all of our feeder districts and share with all of you so that you can continue to tell the story of success as part of our big dual credit initiative. So across our district, coming in sixth place at 619 students, Plainfield, Central, East, North, South combined, 619 students. Coming in fifth, again, for Fall of '24, Joliet Central, Joliet West, Joliet Township at 621 students. In fourth place, Menucha, 631 students at Menucha participated in dual credit and are earning dual credit from JJC. In third place, Valley View Unified School District, Bolingbrook and Romeo High School, 663 students. Number two, Lockport, 683 students are participating in dual credit at Lockport. And in first place, in first place out east, Lincoln Way Central, Lincoln Way East, and Lincoln Way West, leading the way at 808 students participating in dual credit from JJC. Certainly, certainly something to celebrate and thank all of our feeder schools for their support of this incredible initiative. I too wish to celebrate Karen, Jeff, Darrell, all of our accounting team. There are a lot of resources that flow through JJC that support the seven counties, support 700,000-plus residents, the tens of thousands of students we currently educate, hundreds of thousands we have in the past. The unqualified audit is yet further proof that we are responsible stewards of public resources. Chairman, before you today, of course, we have our finance audit report, which you heard about. The second thing we have before the board is a consortium purchase, and the title of which is Global Architect Review ERP Master Plan and Support. And I would just ask the board to remember Dr. Farmer's presentation in October, setting the stage for what is the first significant investment in the ERP optimization and modernization project. Again, commend Jeff, Karen, and the staff for the work they did to finalize the tax levy that we presented last month. That's before the board today. Each fall, we have a cabinet retreat at the President's House, and I just want to offer that not a single cabinet member or chairman of the board were hurt during this activity. You know, oh, I'm sorry. Apparently, Dr. Irvin was hurt. Dr. Irvin, I'm sorry about that. You'll have to file something with Judy Connolly there. But Chairman, this is, this is part of our design thinking initiative. We had 33 design thinking proposals submitted in response to the $100,000 Design Thinking Initiative at the start of the fall semester. 33 proposals. The elite eight made presentations in this room to the President's Cabinet, we were able to fund and support five of them. I will not tease them all, I will not reveal too much, but what I will offer is they will change the face of JJC, they will change the outside, they will change the inside, they will help our faculty create more immersive experiences, their future focus, their environment. the stage for what is the first significant investment in the ERP optimization and modernization project. Again, commend Jeff, Karen and the staff for the work they did to finalize the tax levy that we presented last month. That's before the board today. Each fall, we have a cabinet retreat at the president's house. And I just want to offer that not a single cabinet member or chairman of the board were hurt during this activity. You know, oh, I'm sorry. Apparently Dr. Irvin was hurt. Dr. Irvin, I'm sorry about that. You'll have to file something with Judy Connolly there. But chairman, this is, this is part of our design thinking initiative. We had 33 design thinking proposals submitted in response to the $100,000 design thinking initiative at the start of the fall semester. 33 proposals. The elite eight made presentations in this room to the president's cabinet. We were able to fund and support five of them. I will not tease them all. I will not reveal too much, but what I will offer is they will change the face of JJC. They will change the outside. They will change the inside. They will help our faculty create more immersive experiences. They're future focused, they're ambitious, and they align with the vision that we articulated at the start of the fall semester. At the beginning of the semester, I challenged our leaders to think about the systems and structures of higher education, that if the systems and structures of today did not exist and we had to create them from scratch, they might not resemble what we do. So to get our cabinet members thinking from a system standpoint, thinking creatively, I asked them to revisit their childhood and participate in building some of these structures using Picasso tiles. The image in the middle was created by the dream team of Kelly Rogers, Karen Rizik, and a gentleman by the name of Chairman James Bzinski. Appreciate Chairman Bzinski for stopping by to support the development that we're committed to. He wasn't able to stay with us the whole day, but his presence there was very meaningful. As we celebrate the diversity of our spaces, I thought it was critically important that we invite a world renowned bestselling author by the name of Dr. Maureen Dunn, preceded trustee Broderick as the president of the ICCTA, currently serves as a trustee on the College of DuPage's board, previously served as board chair of COD's board. And Dr. Dunn wrote a book called The Neurodiversity Edge, an eye opening book about what it means to be neurodivergent in this neurodiverse world that we live in. So to the college community and the trustees, the cabinet has read this book, has engaged with Dr. Dunn. And when she's not in Dubai or Tahiti or parts unknown, she graciously accepted the invitation to be with us for a little while to understand, help us understand the neurodivergent population here at JJC of which there are more than 20% to help us celebrate diversity. A shout out to Dr. Dunn. Trustee Broderick referenced this earlier, the open house, the discover JJC, and it was certainly something to celebrate. The chairman and trustees, we had over 500 attendees spend November 2nd, early morning on a Saturday, 500 of them, 254 potential students at JJC. So when you walk these halls and you talk to our students and you hear from our faculty, I absolutely agree with Dr. Marsink that this is one of the most esteemed institutions in the entire state. Pause for dramatic effect because what I really meant to say, and I'm sure Dr. Marsink just misspoke, is the entire country. So shout out to everyone who made discover JJC possible. Our faculty were there, our student development leaders were there, and members of our cabinet were there as well. For the very first time, the JJC men's soccer team went to the national tournament. Now, I'm going to get some heat from the cross country team, so I just want to acknowledge that right now. Previously, the cross country team has multiple national championships. Okay? This year, women's team finished fifth, the men's team finished in third place. I want to celebrate Nathan because Nathan won the national championship. So you know where I'm getting. I'm going to get a lot of heat for not including them in this slide. But I just want to take a moment because Coach Chris has been at this for many, many, many years. As a faculty member recently retired for the very first time in JJC men's soccer history, they won the region, they won the Midwest region and competed with the number seven seed against the number two seed. Sadly, they lost that game. Nonetheless, I think it's important that we celebrate them and I hope it's the start of something special. Chairman, as you know, and trustees, I tried to make my way around the district from Romeoville to actually Lamont there. Had the great pleasure to welcome back to campus the sixth president of Joliet Junior College, President JD Ross. I also had the opportunity to celebrate Dr. Cheryl Green, who's the retiring president of Governor's State University, made some positive comments on the change that she's made at GSU. And I want to take a moment, chairman, you know, to acknowledge what's in front of you here, what many of the trustees helped us to celebrate and explain how it is that we became top five in the nation as is referenced here. This is the central region award, number one in the region. ACCT divides community colleges, all thousand plus of them into five regions. We celebrated being the central region awardee and top five is great, but we're JJC. So you know where we're, where I'm going here. And as I ask you to just sort of, you know, absorb the pictures there and the images, you know, Chairman Bzinski and I served on a panel at ACCT as well. And then the trustees you see pictured there at the bottom, along with Dr. Farmer. When we submitted this application, these are the things that we were celebrated for, the creation of a chief equity officer position. And board of trustees, you celebrated and supported the creation of the chief equity officer. As we evolved that position from the executive director of diversity, equity and inclusion together, working with Dr. Irvin, we envisioned a position that would put equity at the forefront of outcomes for students and outcomes for our employees. Number one, the creation, resource and support of a chief equity officer position. Number two, our commitment to creating and maintaining inclusive spaces at JJC. And number three, and you heard from some of them today, the creation and support of employee resource groups, further giving our employees spaces where they will feel celebrated. And chairman, I want to just make, make a statement here and just, you know, forgive me. I just, I just want to talk about and embrace this moment, you know, in JJC's history as being number one in the country. Number one in the entire country with the word equity at the forefront. This award named after a former Joliet Junior College trustee. We're not number five in the country. We're not number four in the country. We're not number three in the country, not number two in the country. We are number one in the nation when it comes to celebrating the diversity of our classrooms, our labs, our spaces, our commitment to equitable outcomes for everyone in the JJC community, and our commitment to creating and maintaining spaces of inclusion. And I need this board to know. And I need the cabinet to know. And I need our employees to know that as leaders of this institution, that we are not afraid, that we are not afraid to fight for what is right, to fight for what is just. And as a 10th president of the nation's very first community college, I stand on the shoulders of giants and I'm reminded of my identity, of my identity when I enter spaces typically reserved for college presidents. And I draw courage from our students. I draw courage from our faculty. I draw courage from our employees and everyone who can claim to be a member of the JJC community, the legends who came before me, luminaries who felt the same but had fewer options and whose bravery and resilience have provided me with many more. And to them, to the college community, I say, I am not afraid. And as I think about the future for our children, I'm reminded every day, and this chairman is for the cabinet specifically, that leadership is a precarious perch filled with treacherous terrain. And marginalized populations often find themselves on fragile footing, navigating a perilous path with winding roads that lead to hazardous heights with dangers all around. And when they highlight the effects of injustice, they find themselves standing on a crumbling cliff. The leaders of the past have inspired the bold leaders of today and the bold leaders of today are creating the exceptional leaders we need tomorrow. And I need our students to understand that I am not afraid. And as I think about. And as I think about the future and what it could mean for higher education, I'm comforted to know that JJC, as many reference today, we are anchored in our core values. And as uncertain as a future might be, we are not adrift. But we have to protect the people committed to creating and maintaining those inclusive spaces. So I want the entire JJC community to think deeply about your role in our community, your place in this civil, but sometimes uncivil society, because we need brave leaders to fight for what is right, to fight for what is just, leaders anchored by their core values whose identities proudly inform their leadership. Leadership led to this award, chairman, and I'd like to allocate two minutes of my time to our chief equity officer, Dr. Esquortina Irvin.
Thank you, Dr. Nemo. Chairman Bzinski, trustees of the board, member of the community and our amazing and courageous JJC students. It is with honor that I stand before you and say that this award represents who we are. It's our promise under our core values of inclusion and equity and that's who we are. This award honors the courage and resilience of both past pioneers and current equity champions. It represents decades, I mean decades of hard work that has shaped JJC's principles, policies and values for all students. And when we say all students, we mean all students. We mean everyone regardless of disability, age, ethnicity, culture, and yes, gender or sexual orientation. JJC success includes five year high retention rates among black and brown students, the continued success of the Center of Multicultural Access and Success, increased minority dual credit enrollment through our 12 by 12 by 12 initiative, support of scores of diverse community clients through our Entrepreneur and Business Center, and the formation of four unique employee resource groups that are celebrated. As equity obsessed, future focused leaders, we aggressively pursued a minority serving designation. And for the first time in the long history of JJC, we can say we are a Hispanic serving institution. These achievements would not have been possible without the support of our board of trustees and our college president. As JJC's first equity officer, thank you for your confidence and courage. Thank you. And to conclude, and to conclude, this award gives us courage and it inspires us to continue this DEI journey, this courageous, hard journey to celebrate our students and ensure that you feel included and welcomed here at JJC. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman.
At this time, we're going to go into a closed session. Item 1.7 under 2C1, 2C8 and 2C11. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stanborsky.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bzinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.8, return to public session. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stanborsky.
Yes.
Trustee Bzinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.9.1, approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
I have a concern. I don't see in number four under public comments where it says Robert Wonderlich addressed the board regarding the trustee vacancy. He did request to be appointed and gave the vote count. I think that should be included. That was key on as far as spot on for information that should be, should be there, there, there.
Can we note that Mr. Wonderlich addressed the board in that meeting?
Then we have to amend the motion to include a correction.
Who made the original motion?
I did.
Can you amend the motion, include the statement that Mr. Wonderlich addressed the board?
Yes, if we can go ahead and approve the minutes, amending them to reflect Mr. Wonderlich's addressing the board.
So moved.
Second.
Josh, do you agree?
Yes.
Isn't it in there under item four? Am I missing something?
Did we miss it?
Item four, public comments. It says Robert Wonderlich addressed the board.
Is it? Let's see. I wanted it to say he addressed the board regarding the trustee vacancy and requested to be appointed, given the vote of 3-2-1.
We need to address all of the comments made by people in public comment then to spell out what their comments were?
Wait, you said number four? Hold on.
It's under four.
So it is in here then?
It's under public comments.
I don't have that. Mine's pulled items.
Okay, at this time I have to ask counsel, how do we go back to the original motion by trustee Morales?
Her amended motion was not seconded as far as I know, so she can just withdraw that.
No, I think trustee Morales did second it.
She would have had, she would have had to make the motion. So, so there was no second.
I don't believe there was.
Okay.
So I'd like to withdraw the amended motion.
If you want for clarity, she can make another motion to approve as submitted.
I had motioned that we approve the minutes of the special meeting held October 7th as submitted.
Second.
Are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote, yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Stanborsky.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bzinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
1.9.2, the approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on October 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
I have a concern on item 2.1.1. There was no comments at all, no identification of the contract and the, that I asked for goals and the details on this contract. We're not in there. And the salary increase of 39,000 with 14% salary increase.
I also would have to look back at the meeting minutes, but I don't believe that I was the one who made that motion. Do you remember me making that motion as I disagreed with the president's contract? I question that as well.
I don't know.
I don't believe I made that motion.
She made it. She made it. I have no clue. I don't remember that.
I'll go back.
You may have.
Let's see why I would have.
But I think in order for us to be transparent with our community, I think we need to identify what the contract was and the salary increase was, a 14%. And it was $39,000 with a $5,000 retention bonus.
I think the contract was posted on our website also. So we were being transparent. We were transparent. We have a motion and a second to approve.
We do. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
No.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.0, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a comment. We used to have on the agenda the item that said trustee agenda updates as well as what the trustee agenda item request was. That was up until 11/15 of 2023. That has been moved without the board having that on there. And I'm wondering, why was it changed, why it was removed? Because the board didn't talk about having it moved, and it was trustee agenda item request along with trustee updates. So.
That was initially moved in a long sentence that basically said trustee updates and agenda recommendations.
So that's why it was moved, because I didn't see anything in the minutes when I was referring back to it, because I went through 2023 and 2024 minutes.
Did you watch the video?
You can go and you could still at any time during your trustee comments request agenda items.
Okay, then I have another comment. Resolution. We normally do resolutions, and I know this was November 11th was for veterans. Are we not doing anything for veterans when we have proclamations for everybody else? Do we not do a veteran proclamation? That should have been on the agenda for this month or last month.
The college did something to for veterans, I believe.
Yeah, we had a
Yeah, you honored Yeah, the college honored the veterans.
We did honor the veterans, but I think the question is about a resolution.
Right.
I will follow up with my team regarding that.
Would you please? Thank you. And then the last thing that I'm concerned about is that I don't see the ACCT report updates from all of the trustees and administrators that went to Seattle for the conference. And that is normally what we're supposed to be doing, and I have my summary all written up because we spent, what, $5,000 each for each person? About $35,000 of taxpayer money that we spent. I think we should be giving full data of what we did at that conference.
Again, you have trustee updates at the end. I also went through policy and I actually reached out to Karen, and I believe she reached out to, was it? Who did you reach out to? But it's actually not in policy to do that.
Whether it's in policy or not, Jim, the fact that we spent that much money in order for us to be transparent, I think we should disclose.
Again, you have trustee comments to explain what you did at the end of the meeting. You have time allotted for you to speak, and you can tell them whatever you want regarding your week in Seattle.
And I think we've done that historically after a conference. Trustees share the highlights. They don't take an hour to do that, but they do share highlights.
No, we did have a report that was given to us when we went every time.
It's not policy. It's highlights. It's not a report. It's just highlights.
Anything else? But I did reach out. We could not find that in policy where it said it had to be done. Knowing that tonight's meeting was real long, I didn't want to put it in there.
Well, maybe we should devote that to next month's meeting then?
Well, you have your trustee time tonight or this evening. You can address it.
But I have other things that I want to say in trustee updates. That's why I'm thinking this is this is critical and important. I think we could just deserve some, reserve some time for it at the next month's meeting, don't you?
Today, you can do that, and then next month, you can do the other item.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
This is on the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
No.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.1, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have several items to be pulled.
They are?
3.2.1, 3.2.3, 3.2.6, and 3.2.8.
Any other items to be pulled?
No.
We're ready to vote on the non-pulled items.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.1, the bid for the city center chiller curb repair.
Discussion.
I need a motion first.
So moved.
Second.
My question is this. I'm looking at more money that's going out. Are we over the dollar amount that we spent that we gave estimates on? On the, because this is the rehabilitation from the microburst, right? It says the doghouse. Chiller curb repair.
Yeah, that was something that Rick Lyman had talked about today in Building and Grounds Committee. They were going to be coming with a request to the board tonight for additional funding for the city center request.
So this is additional then?
I believe so.
What's our total numbers up to then on this?
So at this point, I would like to turn this over to Kissel.
Please.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We're over $1 million in expenditures to repair the city center. This was included in the list, but the estimate at the time was about $100,000 because people didn't really understand what the true cost of fixing this curb would be on the roof.
So we're about $250,000 more than what
We're $250,000 more than we thought for this particular item.
Do we have anything more that we're expecting to increase the cost?
No, this will be, this will complete everything. And then as soon as we're finished, we'll have a total number that I can provide.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ready to vote?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.3, bid to replace the domestic hot water tank underground irrigation piping. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
My question is this. I'm looking at 152 and 458. What happened? What's the difference? I mean, that's huge. You're over $300,000 of a differential.
Okay, at this time, Kissel, could you please respond to that question?
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. You know, we don't know why they came back so different. They, we provided the same specifications. Two vendors responded differently in their cost estimate.
Do you guys compare to see how they're doing as far as the cost factors to see where they build it up more than what the other one did?
They look at the proposals thoroughly.
So you just go with the proposal then?
And we've used Cryer Olson quite a few times, and we're pleased with their work.
I mean, I like the 152, but I'm still shocked that the other bid was $300,000 more. That causes me a little bit of a red flag concern.
Right. In talking with Pat, he said that, you know, since COVID, we've had these kind of disparate bids. And, you know, that's just something that we see from time to time.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.6, the consortium for global architect review, the ERP master plan and support.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, what I'm looking at, when I look at the summary, okay, project manager for Workday totally gone?
Correct.
One project manager.
One project manager.
Yes, Lisa Richardson is still with us.
And what was the cost of that one about?
Remind me of that of Kissel.
Do we only have that person one year?
Correct.
So one year, but we were supposed to have had a two?
It was about $320,000.
Okay, so that covers what this contractual amount would be? So we'll be still even as far as not any extra money coming out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, but I do understand trustee Bradrick's concern with having to fix this ERP. But I also understand that this is technology and this is very costly. And you did inform us last month, Doctor, about the costs. So, yeah, it's something that we, unfortunately, we have to pay this. So, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
We're ready to vote? Yes. Item 3.2.6.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.8, the sole source for legal services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking why we need this specific law firm? Because I know we've asked, we've had an upgrade or an approval for a law firm in May or June, and that hasn't come anywhere. What are we doing with this one? I'm trying to understand what the purpose
So this is our cybersecurity law firm.
Cybersecurity?
Correct.
So they have the experience
Correct.
that our general counsel doesn't have.
I wouldn't say that, but this is the partnership that we have. It's our insurance policy.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Karen, we're ready to vote?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.5, Board of Trustees approval of the 2024 tax levy. But I have item 3.5.1, which is a motion to suspend rules temporarily to allow for public comment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And do we still have a gentleman here who had a public comment?
We do. We have Andy Neal, who wanted to speak on the tax levy.
Andy, I believe Andy left.
Did Andy leave?
That was all I had.
What was the reason he was going to talk?
He didn't say tax levy.
And we'll move to item 3.5.3, a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.5.4, the Board of Trustees approval of the tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
I have something I want to state. I'm concerned about the tax levy. It's the first time that I've had questions concerning the budget and everything, and I had 23 questions that didn't get answered. And I saw expenses increase and no budget cuts. So I'm concerned about taking more than what we need. I'm concerned about the taxpayers' involvement and how much we're going to be taxing people. So my concern falls on our tax levy issue.
Who can answer that for her? Go ahead, Karen.
Could you clarify the question for us, please?
I am just making a statement.
I think it's a statement versus a question.
I made a statement that that was my concern, that I did have the 23 concerns. And I thank Karen for getting them after the budget was approved. But I would have liked to have had them prior to, but I know that was not your fault. And because the, it looks as though the budget has increased, and I didn't see any significant budget decreases or cuts, so that's my concern. And I'm stating it that.
I don't think that we necessarily need to have cuts. I don't think we need that. I think as long as we're passing a balanced budget and we are within our 105% for the tax levy, we're not increasing taxes. We all know that inflation has been really high, and we are still maintaining a balanced budget. We've just passed an audit. So I think that the college is still being very fiscally responsible.
Any other questions or comments on the tax levy approval? We're ready to vote, Karen?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
No.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.1, first reading of board policies. We did have a policy meeting report earlier in the session. If there's any conversations or questions regarding these?
Where are we at?
4.1, first reading of board policies.
Oh, the board policies, I do.
Which one is that, Maureen? Braden? Which one is the one that you
I've got, I've got a concern about 4.1.1, 4.1.2, 4.1.3, 4.1.
Let's start with 4.1.1.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, 4.1 first. Okay. As you can see, I am looking at, and I'm going to go back to the policy. 4 point. And first, I want to ask this question because these were all reviewed less than six months ago. Who was the one that instigated bringing them back and adding the good standing?
When we reviewed them six months ago, that was in there. It wasn't clear. We sent it back for clarification. But we did have good standing, but we never brought it for a second reading.
No, no, I'm asking, who's the one that generated wanting to have the good standing when it first
How is that beneficial to the college or the students?
Please rephrase the question in a way that actually addresses what you're trying to
Who's the one that came that wanted the good standing in these when it was first brought to us with good standing?
And my question is, how is that beneficial to the college?
Because these are all directed at me, so I want to Because these are all directed at me, so I want to know.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. If you look at good standing... No, 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 come on. If you look at good standing, everything in good standing...
They are all targeting her. I have said that during an open board meeting that we were changing policies to target a quote-unquote rogue trustee. And I was on the policy committee and recently kicked off because you guys don't like what I have to say and want to try to silence me. So, no, she has a very valid point. Let's not sit here and act like she's not saying these are not directed towards her because they are.
So was it you then?
No, it was, I can answer. Yes, it was. It was Chair Pazinski.
Can we not talk over each other?
It was Chair Pazinski, Maureen, to answer your question, who wanted to implement the good standing. And he wrote it as well, as far as, from what I...
I did not write it at all. I'm not on the policy committee.
He, I was working together with him and I literally was asking him his comments on how to write it, and I never wrote that. So who did write it?
I don't know. I'm not on the policy committee.
Who wrote it?
Who wrote it?
Who wrote it?
Did you write it, Garcia-Ginn?
This is very subjective. The good standing is very subjective because, one, you're going about censures. Okay, well, yeah, you censured me 13 times in the February 14th meeting. There's 13 OMA violations. That's why Maureen and Michelle have the court case in regards because the Attorney General told us to sue because constant OMA violations are constantly happening. Now you're making this where there was no due process. And if we went, and I just read this in this book that was given to us tonight, Section 2 of Bill of Rights, "Due Process and Equal Protection. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor be denied the equal protection of laws."
May I speak upon this topic real briefly?
It's her time. When she's done with her time, we'll move on to the next. So, okay.
Fair enough.
Now you may speak.
All right. So I did a little reading on this, and that was actually one of the things I did at the ACCT conference as I looked into this particular issue. And actually, relatively recently, it was 2021, there was a, it went all the way up to the Supreme Court where there was an issue just like this. And as the court ruled is that Houston Community College did have the right to do just this in the policy. It was actually kind of funny. I looked at Houston Community College's policy and it's very similar to this good standing right here. It's almost, it's not identical, but the spirit of the policy is still there. So, to me, this is perfectly fine, at least according to what I've seen in the Supreme Court. Excuse me, I'm talking.
I don't, I'm just asking.
Excuse me, I'm talking. Yeah, it's absolutely subjective. That's, that's true. Unfortunately, that is kind of the point, is that it is subjective. If the board has to help self-govern, that's the whole point of that policy, is that we need to have the ability to self-govern. Of course, it's subjective. It has to be. So I actually think this is a fantastic policy. I first looked at it and was kind of like, uh, I'm not sure. But after all the reading I did on the topic, not only does it make perfect sense, it's been done other places before. Don't shake your head. It is in Houston Community Colleges. I recommend you look it up.
I did.
Because it is in there.
I'd like to be recognized as well, so I can go ahead and share.
Okay. Yeah, I'm finished.
This particular policy breaks down what the definition of good standing trustee is. And again, this is in spirit of being able to collaborate and being able to have a productive conversation in different spaces. So if we have someone that is not able to collaborate and it's not a productive meeting, it's not going to be helpful. So you will see this particular language across the board on the policies that we have for the first reading. Thank you. Any additional questions for this particular policy, 4.1.1?
I'd just like to recall that we did have a resolution of no confidence for a particular trustee, and that is also in the policy.
Yep.
And that resolution was passed by the board.
And look at how subjective we are.
Then you should be in good standing.
I have been in good standing. It's all subjective things, so. No due process. You don't have due process, you should not be doing this. But you know what? You're just leading to give it more, more with the judge to decide.
That's fine. Thank you.
4.1.2, did you want to discuss that one?
Trustee Development? Yes. So basically, what you're doing is taking away all the rights of a trustee that subjectively is thrown into not good standing. And it's the board that then decides whether you're in good standing or out of good standing. That's not right. That's not fair.
Well, who should decide that?
Well, who, why would you put good standing? If the things come out of court that show that you should never have done what you did...
It didn't come out of court to say that.
I said if they do, if they do.
Big if.
It was an OMA violation. You guys created an OMA violation. You and you and the attorney created these 13 censures that made her read them.
I didn't make her do anything.
Oh, I, you know what? The legal bills showed everything, that all of you guys were coordinating and colliding with each other to do it. And the emails that went back and...
Point of order, this is on trustee development. We're bringing up a lawsuit. I don't see how this is...
I'm sorry, I'm still talking?
Point of order, in Rob's rules, I'm allowed to interrupt. I'm addressing the chair, not you. Chair Pazinski?
So regarding this policy?
Regarding this policy, the trustee issues, you're going to prohibit a trustee from going, doing any trustee development? It's just like I'm trying to go to the ICCTA conference this weekend, which is a real good one with legal and up to dates on that. And I'm being told I only have $120 left in it in my account, which you two came up with and wasn't even brought before us before, and the board member...
You tore it up in front of everyone in the main meeting. You said you don't like it. You tore it up. We came back, we voted it on June, it's on page 160, it's posted online, it's our budget...
You snuck it into the budget.
I did not. Well, if you didn't do your homework and read it before, we voted on it, that's your problem.
Well, under agenda request, I asked to have a click back on the agenda, that very same topic, and it wasn't...
So, the dollar amount that you have in there is part of the policy. It's a policy that you created. You're the one who asked it. Everyone should get to go everywhere so everyone could go to the ACCT or Hawaii. Everyone could go...
Right, but it was supposed to be a budget, not for individual, for each one. It was supposed to be, like, all the other colleges, they have a main budget and you can draw from that. Because if someone doesn't go, there's still money in there. If you look at the other trustees in all the other community colleges...
It specifically says, somebody who doesn't use it, it does not create a slush fund for somebody else. And that's what you're using it as. You go everywhere, no matter what, and you don't represent us well, which was what resolutions were. So...
Point of order, is there a particular question?
The budget is as it is. So I also look, in this trustee development, good standing has been wiped out of it. It's not even in this, or this policy. It's been stricken. So what's your other issue?
I have a question. So you have a, so you just said that trustee Broderick was going to everything and that she's not representing us well, so therefore this, this policy is targeted against, towards her?
No, not at all.
Because, yes, because you want to prohibit her by censuring her and having her not in good standing so that she can't go to anything.
We have to be fiscally responsible, as Maureen Broderick says, to our taxpayers. And we have a budget, and every trustee knows what their budget is. If I spend all my money, I can't go to any more events. Okay? So if you already used your budget, you have to prioritize which events you're going to go throughout the year and make sure you have enough money.
There should never be...
Yes, there is. If you're going to be fiscally, I'm talking, Maureen, I'm talking. Okay, if you're going to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers, then we should stay within our budget.
I would just also like to point out for the record that the trustee's budget with inflation was lowered from last year while the student trustee's budget was hired. This is another act in trying to control the budget so that they can prohibit Maureen and I, who don't agree with them, from going to reach out for help from other state agencies.
No, our budgets were, that was, that's completely misrepresenting, trustee Lee. The budgets were not lowered.
Yes, our budget, our whole, our whole budget as a trustee...
Point of order, that's not part of this discussion, wait, no.
This is about our budget. So yes, it is a part of this. This is about Board of Trustees' Development.
Trustee Development.
Right, and you're talking about budgets. That's what's in here. It's about budgets. We have to be fiscally responsible. Well, I just want to remember that when we pass the budget, if you look at it, the whole dollar amount that we approved for trustee development in our budgets was lowered while we have hired the student trustees and with inflation and wanting to, you know, make sure that everyone else is able to participate and go to everything. But clearly, you want to lower our budget and write policies to prohibit us from doing things. That is very clear in what you're doing.
No, and all of that is a misrepresentation. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
No more discussion on this.
Well, the thing is, there's a seminar this Friday, Legal Legislative and Ethics Upstate, presented by Catherine Local from Robin Schwartz, who's higher ed, and you guys all interviewed her. And that is 165, and I get an email from Karen saying, unfortunately, you only have 120.04 balance in your community engagement. The ICCTA account has 6,212.
But your budget is depleted, so you can pay the extra to go.
Point, yes.
In terms of trustee Broderick, your time has been up and you have exceeded, as a reminder.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So 4.1.3, Board Travel.
Any questions?
Once again, you have the good standing.
Correct.
And that's, to me, subjective, no due process. So you guys are doing everything subjectively. There's no objectivity in it. This is slanted to really go against me, totally. Because you guys think that you're right with the things you did for censuring, based on subjective comments made, not, no due process made, I have a problem with it.
Okay.
And you're taking away our fiduciary responsibilities of being able to go to these ACCT, ICCTA functions. Yes.
May I speak for a moment? That is a, is my time going? Okay.
That was my time.
Oh, that was your time. So the, so a brief aside is that that is not something that is, what's, what's a word for it? That is not a right of ours to go on those meetings. It is, in very clear language, not. It's not a right of ours to go on those meetings at all. Supreme Court made that very clear in the ruling. I recommend reading it. It's not. That's something that we have the capacity to do. That's something that's granted to us by the institution. That's not something that we just get the right to do.
She's in the way for her time, you have to pause hers.
Correct, it's not an entitlement.
It's not, you're right.
We have to prioritize which items that we need. I've been on this board almost 10 years, so I don't need to go to all these seminars and trainings because I've learned a lot from prior years, and you've been on this board longer than I have. And you want to go to everyone, correct. Well, then prioritize.
I thought mine was still going.
Sorry.
Yeah, and now she turned it, so I can't videotape it.
Hers is expired and restarted.
No, it doesn't matter. They're running her time while other people are talking instead of pausing it.
This is my time right now, point of order.
But look, it turned her clock so that I can see it. Why are you turning her clock? It's still running.
I saw what happened in one moment.
You literally, as soon as I went to videotape you, you turned her clock. I just pointed out to Maureen that your time was still running while Stamborsky was talking.
So she would have...
I would like all of those clocks where the camera can see them. This is, this is craziness.
Yes, because right now we're going through my time too. Like, there was, there might have been an incident. But the point is, is that this is very clear in the Supreme Court case, is that, yes, this is not something that we just get or that's given to us. This is not part of our rights as a trustee. So it can actually just be taken away. And that was done in Texas.
You're so wrong.
Don't, it is my time to speak.
I'm just saying, you're so...
I would recommend you read it. It's a really short read, 14 pages. It's very clearly laid out in the words. That'll end my comment.
Well, just with everything that you go to and get involved with the ICCTA, we pay a good dues. And the dues is for us to learn. That ICCTA is for the trustees, for trustee development. It's not for hobnobbing or whatever. It's to learn and to learn what the other colleges are doing so that we can bring things back, which we have done. So it is definitely a tool of learning. And the ACCT, as you saw that you went to, that was a big learning tool too. And when you went to the National Legislative Summit with us, did you not learn what the legislators are doing and what we can do to promote JJC? Okay? Every trustee has the entitlement. We're all 1-7.
We're not entitled to anything.
We're all 1-7.
Mm-hmm. We're not entitled. We have a budget.
Are you certain entitled to equal rights?
Yes, we are. Absolutely, yes.
We're entitled to equal rights.
We all have equal rights.
As trustees, and Maureen and I are not being treated equally on this board, and that is what the lawsuit is about, because you're not allowed to do that per Illinois state statutes and OMA.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, I thought we were talking about policies.
Right.
And we're going far afield talking about rights and lawsuits.
All of these policies are a violation of our fiduciary duty and our right.
Back to, I think we're on policy, item 4.1.3.
Correct.
We were on 4.1.4 for trustee development budgets where we were just at. And that conversation has just come to an end.
4.1...
I thought we did board travel and we went to now the trustee development budget.
4.13 was, 4.1.3 was for board travel.
And we just got done discussing 4.1.4.
Yep, and we went into 4.1.4. So we all have a budget, and if we run out of our money and we want to continue going to events, then we should pay for it out of our pocket. Or we prioritize.
I did. I paid out the $3,000 last year because you rescinded the letter that said you were going to support me as the president of the ICCTA.
You never had a letter signed by me saying that.
I had it from the previous...
Previous boards do not...
And they knew that I was going from vice president to president, so I'm sorry, that's wrong.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
No. It's creating a dissension in this group.
When you go to the conferences and you make disparaging comments about our president, you shouldn't be going.
I didn't.
So that was it for the first readings that you identified? So we're now going to 4.2?
4.2 is on consent.
Okay, so we're done. We're going to 5.1, the Student Trustee Report.
All right.
I don't think we got through all of these.
Don't we have to vote on those because they were pulled from the agenda?
There was Committees of the Board that I said, too.
You didn't, that's, you didn't pull that just now?
Yeah, I did. I said all of the ones. I went down. I said six or seven of them. I went down the whole list.
No, we went through all the ones you called.
Yes.
We were on the ones that...
I went down on my checklist.
You didn't call 1.4.1.6.
I said 4.16, from 4.1 to 4.16.
No, you, you were only allowed the one, and we've already talked about that. You didn't call any others.
Well, I'm going to go back to 4.16 because you guys have in here that the chair can remove. I got news for you. Robert's Rule does not say that the chair can remove. That's for an eight homeowners association. It is not for an elected Board of Trustees, School Board of Trustees. So this has got to go back to committee. Committees of the board have got to go back to the, to the committee.
Excuse me, which one is that?
It's 4. or 1.01.27.00, Committees of the Board.
I'm going to defer this to our attorney.
In Robert's Rules of Order, it provides that the chairman can remove anybody from a committee at any time at their pleasure if that's how the people are appointed.
For homeowners association.
Please review, please review policy 1.27. And Robert's Rules of Order, it's, I'll get it for you. It's section 13 something.
Yeah, and I talked to the ICCTA. And that is only for homeowners association. We are an elected body that you cannot remove.
Not saying, you're not being removed from office.
You're being removed from a committee.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. My point is refer to section 13.23 of Robert's Rules of Order.
This needs to go back to committee, then. 13. what?
23.
It will continue as part of the first read. And then it will continue as part of the first read for this meeting. And then next time it will come back as second read.
So it's not going back to the committee?
Correct.
No, because they don't agree with anything.
Well, we're going to take legal opinions from our legal attorney.
But legal opinion is wrong. Legal opinion is wrong.
And we have voted to hire another attorney, which the president has refused to sign the engagement letter so that we can have another legal. No, we want another legal opinion. This is about legal opinion. So this eschylee is on topic. Because the president has ignored a board vote.
It's about committees of the board. As a reminder.
And we're talking about our legal counsel's inability to give legal advice.
We're talking about committees of the board, so.
In your opinion.
Okay.
Which we all have our own.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we're good for 4.1.6?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. That was the last one, trustee Broderick, that you had?
As long as you got 4.1.1, 4.1.2, 4.1.3, 4.1.4, 4.1.5, and 4.1.6 is what I was looking at.
I did hear your comments.
Thank you. But none of them are going back to committee, right?
Correct.
Chair got his position in good standing. Okay, got it.
Item 5.1, student trustee report.
Good evening, JJC, Board of Trustees, members of our student population and our faculty and staff. Thank you for being here. This is the student trustee report for the month of November for the regular Board of Trustees meeting for Joliet Junior College. So I just want to quickly, as I always start covering recent campus and community events. To start, Sustainability Union hosted their third Repair Cafe at the Romeo, Romeoville campus on Saturday, October 16th. Overall, there were 100 community members who participated in this event, either by volunteering their time to help support this initiative or by bringing their items in to support a circular economy. And in total, they were able to repair a total of 88 items with a successful repair rate of 77% of the items that were brought into Repair Cafe. I'd just like to quickly thank Maria Ana Rayfak, Ash Clinder, Deborah Dawn, and Stephanie Braun for helping pull this initiative together and bring this amazing effort to the JJC community. And then there was also the Fall Festival hosted on the H Bridge here on main campus on Wednesday, October 30th. This event was really fun because it provided students with a space to relax and de-stress after midterms and also get some tarot readings and palm readings because they brought in vendors from the community. And that was really nice to provide for students because it's not always a common opportunity you have. But I know, I'm mystic myself. I like to. Then the Schmeck Sustainability Union was the next event I wanted to highlight, which was in the U Building on Friday, November 1st. This event featured a panel of young sustainability professionals, including JJC alumna. And I was told alumna is the correct word, not alumni, because they were referencing one. But Erica Gonzalez-Guzman, who and other local community sustainability professionals who are supporting the local communities through sustainable initiatives. There were approximately 60 participants in six schools represented during this conference, including Joliet Junior College, Governor's State, Lewis University, Prairie State College, South Suburban Community College, and University of St. Francis. During this conference, they, student-led research projects were featured from all the six schools, as well as they hosted an upcycled art competition, which the art can be viewed on display in the T Building right next to the Take It table, if, which is a resource that sustainability has put together to help provide for those who are in need in their community locally and at a daily basis. Then there was also a student advisory committee meeting at Richard Daley Community College, which, I'm sorry, the picture is not very well quality, but there's a picture in the top right corner of all the student trustees at, from all the different Illinois community colleges who were able to make it that day. During this meeting, we spent time discussing where we'd like to focus our lobbying efforts in this, at the next spring legislative summit in April. And then after, and then I'm, to finish recent events here, I want to highlight the SGA, Student Government Association Dodgeball Club versus club tournament, which was held on Tuesday, November 12th. And I just want to give a congratulations. And I don't see anybody from the group here, but Latinos Unidos was actually the champion and winner of that tournament. And I just want to highlight them for coming out and supporting that event for student government. But now, before I get into recent events, I do want to highlight the ACCT Leadership Conference or Congress that we all attended in Seattle. Trustee Lee, trustee Broderick, chairman Bozinski, Dr. Mu, Dr. Palmer, and trustee Stanborsky, we all attended together. And trustee Harris. I'm so sorry. Yes, trustee Harris was wonderfully there. And yes, but I just wanted to talk about some of the sessions I attended and share some key insights with the JJC community from what I learned. And I attended, the first session was how trustees can support presidents as people first and professionals second. And during this session, key conversations surround, surrounding supporting the trustees' health and, or, sir, excuse me. During this session, key conversations surrounding supporting the, our trustees supporting the health and wellbeing of the college president and also trustees supporting and investing in the president's leadership to ensure an aligned vision for the institution and as well as supporting contracts that are transformative with their leadership. Also, we, there was also a student advisory committee meeting and a special session held where we also had key discussions surrounding mental health, as well as looking at how transfer and articulation agreements work between universities and community colleges. And we also discussed, again, what we want to do focusing our legislative efforts in the February upcoming National Legislative Summit in Washington, DC. I also stopped in and attended, oh, I'm on the wrong slide. I'm so sorry.
Can you have the other page?
I guess, I thought I had sessions, but I didn't. I guess I moved today. I'm so sorry, everybody. But I also attended the national, state, and regional view of how community college baccalaureate degrees are meeting workforce needs. And this session provided insights into how other states have gotten community college bachelor degree programs approved in their states and community colleges, discussed barriers faced, and shared what resources are available for states and community colleges looking to move forward with this national initiative through this Community College Baccalaureate Association. I also attended a session on clean energy funding, which is a game changer for community college. This session focused on sharing key insights surrounding clean energy funding solutions, including elective pay programs through the Inflation Reduction Act, as well as tax credits available for community colleges and energy performance saving contracts that community colleges are eligible for, which can help organizations, and I think we're all going to really like this, help organizations pay for today's buildings with tomorrow's guaranteed savings, which is really something exciting because it's really talking about how buildings are going to be able to pay for themselves through clean energy tax credits. And that was exciting. I also stopped into the AI lab during the Leadership Congress and spent some time discussing with different industry leaders the use of AI in advising and admission spaces in community college campuses and how those can be possibly brought forth to just help support students. I also attended a session on homelessness and housing insecurity, which focused on key initiatives that community colleges are taking to help address growing homelessness and housing insecurity among student populations. One program that really caught my interest was about discussing partnerships with local private and public four-year universities that offer housing to students in efforts to help, offer housing to support community college students in particular. So it's like some setting up with one of the local four-years around here where they'll have extra dorm space that we can then have agreements so our students can have access to those dorm spaces. Provides appropriate and affordable housing for our students and population, given we have a lot of non-traditional students who, at the session, they also talked about who face landlord discrimination, either based on, you know, they're a student. So there was a final session I attended during the Congress was the building advocacy capacities with trustees, employees, and students. And this session gave insights into ways community colleges can support their entire campus community through active engagement and, excuse me, and through increased involvement in campus events and advocacy. So with that, now we'll go back to the slide that I was showing first, the upcoming campus and community events, which there's a lot of exciting things here. Firstly, DEI and disability services are putting together an Accessible Night Under the Stars on Thursday, November 14th in the Herbert, so that's tomorrow, in the Herbert Trackman Planetarium. This event will go from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And then the CMOS Office, Center for Multicultural Access and Success, will be hosting the meet and US diplomat on the, on Tuesday, November 19th in A Building at 2:30 PM. Then on November 19th, on the H Bridge, Pride Alliance will be hosting Transgender Day of Remembrance to honor those lost to violence against the transgender community over the last year. Then there will also be a World AIDS Day drag show on December 10th, which will, is something that is exciting to come back to JJC because last year was the first time they brought it back in over 12 years of having that. And they used to have it as a regular event. So I know I'm excited because it also helps provide, they donate to the Chicagoland Memorial AIDS Quail Project, which helps support those who are living with HIV. Then also, and many of you know about this one, Foster Palooza is coming up. And they're looking for all the help they can get. So it will be on December 13th in the A Building from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM. And I know that that's an effort put together by Mario Underwood, also members of the foundation, and also members of the president's office, who helped pull that off to help support foster families and communities in need in our local area. So with that, I do want to go into highlighting some of the community college baccalaureate degree updates from the study we conducted here at JJC. And there's not a lot here, just finishing out from last month. But I wanted to talk to you all about where are students taking classes? So for 38% of the students we surveyed in the study, they had their classes in person and on campus. And 27% only had class on campus most of the time, and they had a few online classes. Then 23% who were, participated in the study said they had some of their classes in person and then some on campus, but some online, too. Then 11% had no classes on campus or in person. So, and then we also, so we asked students about travel time for, to JJC. And for the maximum travel time, we found some students were traveling 120 minutes one way to get to JJC. Yeah. I could not imagine.
No way.
Not me. But then we found the median travel time from, most of the students were 25 minutes, 30. And then the mean reflected that, too, in 25 minutes. But then we also added for a standard deviation of around 12 minutes from all that. So we also asked students, how much time is it taking you if you were to travel to your local four-year university? And again, we found people who were saying a maximum of 120 minutes, two hours in the car. And we also had students who said 42 minutes, which is getting close to an hour for the median. Mean was 48 minutes, which, and then they did give a standard deviation of 31 minutes for about half an hour. But it's still, I, that's just one way to a public four-year. I can't imagine doing that every day as a student. So yeah, and then we finally, finally finished the survey by asking, how are students paying for classes? How are they affording college? And we found that 51% of the students who took the survey and participated in the study said they were working more than 25 hours a week just to pay for classes. And 30% said they were working less than 25 hours a week to pay for classes. We only had 18% say they weren't working to pay for classes. And that's a very small amount when you consider that 50 and 30% said, yeah, they're working either part-time or full-time during the week. That's a lot for students to do. Yes, and then, and then really quick, I know today we've had a lot of people come in and talk about standards of the board and how the board is acting to behave. So I wanted to share with the community members some of the model standards for good practice that we see every day, just to help provide a sense of, you know, peace and transparency between us and the community who are here. And also, I feel these will help with understanding some of where the board gets their standards. So, and I'm on the wrong page. But really, so I should pick three from the front of the, in the front of the board book. Every month, there is a model standard for good practice. I know we've all seen it. I wanted to share these three. So the first I picked was number eight, which was trustees must exemplify ethical behavior and conduct that is above reproach and as an individual and as a collective. And I also wanted to share the number 15 or 11. Trustees put the interest of the college before all others. And then I also wanted to share 15 with you all, that trustees support a positive working relationship with other trustees and the president on and off campus. Trustees must address, and that's supposed to take conflicts, not conferences, excuse me, but conflicts with other trustees equitably and respectfully and understand the differences between policy development and administrative operational decisions. But with that, that's all I had to share today. Thank you for giving me the time to speak and share with you all. And I'll use my time back.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a comment or question, well, statement.
Are there questions? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. Can you remind me the details for Foster Palooza?
Yes, absolutely.
You mentioned December.
December 13th.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And that is in the, it's going to be pretty much all throughout the whole building, A Building and T Building and C Con, it's everywhere. It's a giant event. It's wonderful. It's just a great holiday party for all the local low-income foster families that we have in our areas that we can live with.
And I know that in the last few years, it has been something that the whole JJC community has participated in different ways.
Yes.
I have seen wonderful pictures. And it looks like a really good event in order to make sure that we're bringing out community members on campus and also having our staff and students actually participate and give back to the community and be involved. So thank you for sharing about that particular event. And thank you for your work as a trustee. So thank you for the wonderful presentation.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions? Sorry, I sat down quickly.
May I, real quick?
Yeah.
Trustee Queenie, that was an incredible student trustee report.
Okay.
That was probably the best student trustee report that I, at least in the top 10 that I've ever seen. And I was going to thank you so much for including the wonderful dodgeball tournament. I swung by, and that was super cool. There was one last year. Shout out real quick to Andrew Mercsmanis. He was there as well. And I also wanted to thank you so much for all the wonderful information that you've gotten on, on the four-year institution and like what's, and all this information. And thank you so much for including the standard deviation, too. That is, I love seeing that. That's just, the statistician in me is very happy when I see a standard deviation. So again, fantastic job. Thank you so much, trustee Queenie.
Thank you.
Item 5.2, representative to the ICCTA, ACCT, trustee Harris.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, and thank you, trustee Queenie. He and I ran into each other quite a bit.
So many times.
At the conference. I will apologize this time. I don't have my PowerPoint ready. I ran out of time, so I didn't get to put the Space Needle on there. I'm glad I didn't because he had it on his. But anyway, yeah, I'm just going to read the notes that I have. The Seattle Leadership Conference, it was a great one. I really enjoyed myself. This is, I believe, the second one that I've gone to. It was loaded with many great topics. So many, it was almost hard to choose which one to go to. But, but most importantly, I was very glad that we were able to bring home two of the awards, which you see has already been presented tonight. ICCTA award along with the national award. And I would like to thank Dr. Irving and her group for the work that they've done on the DEI. And all of the individuals who submitted nominations for the award, I thank you for that as well. And congratulations to the college on receiving that. Some of the sessions that I found interesting, quite a few of them were based on the AI presentations and then trustee leadership, developing relationships, and integrating public affairs. But mostly important was the programs that had been successful to the universities in their enrollments. And that was the dual credit. There were, there were a lot of them listed on the brochure to attend. I did not attend them because I knew we were leading. Every other session that I'd gone to, they were talking about how we were in the lead with some of the percentages. So I wanted to use my time somewhere else. I also intended, well, let's see, of course, okay, dual credit. I attended one of the, another AI innovation program. Was very interesting. I wish I had that film strip. I have the people and their faces and interacting with others, but we just have to forget that today. But it was Harper College had kicked off a program. Of course, it was grant. It was a grant from the Department of Labor. And that program was focusing on growing forward-thinking administrators and business leaders together to help them prepare the next generation of professionals, which is our students. So I thought that was really nice. And, and I know we have something coming up, so I'm not going to try to, to compare this. It was just that I wanted to mention that. I also liked the fact that it was a program that was focusing on women in tech and minimizing the equity gaps. So I thought that was interesting. Another session was called trustee advocating for public policy. I felt this session was very helpful to me because I was just recently nominated to serve on the policy committee. So I want to make sure that I'm zoomed in and I signed up for the newsletter so I can at least get some outside information on public policy along with policy on committees. The presenter focused on building relationships with schools. And there again, I know we already do that. So that's JJC in the lead again. We already do that. But they did mention a way to build community partners. And, and that was getting to know the state reps and the senators. And we need to clean up our policies and constantly reviewing memos of understanding, focusing and emphasizing on the gains that we have achieved at our college when we present information to them. That helps us to get what we need in terms of funding or whatever it is we're, we're seeking. So, so they, they just focused on making sure that the relationships are solid and the trustees who have made solid relationships to make sure that they keep that bond so that we can continue to focus on our gains and continue to be able to ask when the time comes. So. And then, let's say, they reiterated, the board sets the policies and the president and his cabinet implements them. But the key is working together. And I have a note on here, the pink slide. Sorry. But anyway, my takeaway with that is working hard to get the students in. So that's my commitment. But to get them out with the least expense and making sure this concern is shared with all of our partners. So again, I enjoyed the trip. We had a little time to socialize. As I mentioned earlier, we did go to the Space Needle. That was a good time. And I look forward to the next one. And I appreciate the opportunity to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with trustee reports. Do you have a two-minute trustee report? Is that in?
Well, 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 actually, actually, I do have one thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
This is kind of directed to Dr. Namu. I am glad to know that JJC, no, not JJC, but Joliet Township High School, District 204 Central, was on that list of the top six for the dual credit totals. That's my high school. So I just want to add that. So I'm glad to know that they were on there. So that's all.
That's it? Thank you. Trustee Lee.
Before you start my time, can I please ask why we have gone down to two minutes when we have five minutes to talk and discuss topics? And this is the only time that you have given Maureen and I to talk? And you've given her two minutes to talk about whatever? I, I just am wondering why we've gone from five minutes to two minutes on, on being able to discuss things? It was three minutes in the policy and then two minutes for discussion, a total of five minutes to discuss and talk things, talk about things? And this is the, literally the only time you've given Maureen and I to speak? Why is it down to two minutes? Why is it down to two minutes?
We've always done trustee updates as two minutes. The three minutes and the five minutes are per agenda items.
No, we, when did, why we're in policy have we always done trustee updates that were changed, as Maureen said, at 11 whatever, where they took out the point where we can separately ask for things to be added to the agenda? You're literally putting us with two minutes to speak about anything we want to? And you've completely taken away my right as a citizen to make public comment? This is not in policy anywhere.
Are you ready to start your time, trustee Lee?
Five minutes. I value students' voices and the right to public comment is your time to speak. Last month at the October regular meeting during trustee updates, which was my time to speak, I was first interrupted by our student trustee and then a group of students that had addressed being members of student government during public comment. I responded to the students interrupting me by saying, this is not public comment. If you would like to address the board, you can come back next month during public comment. As stated by trustee Broderick, the chair is responsible for controlling the meetings and should have stopped this behavior as our policy states. I understand I have offended some, but in no way did I belittle the students or student government. I stated a fact about our policy and expressed my concern that this behavior was being encouraged and organized with the help of a board member and possibly the administration. It is a fact, in September at our regular board meeting, our student trustee announced during student trustee updates that through student government, them would be initiated free speech tables to address the temperament of the board and how the students felt about the lawsuit against the college. My concern that this behavior was being encouraged and organized with the help of members of the board is a fact, as our student trustee is a member of this board. I would then, it would then be logical that the students who showed up to speak at the October meeting, who admitted being involved in student government, were influenced from our student trustee's opinion of the temperature of the board through his involvement, through them's involvement in student government, the Freedom of Steep Beach table them initiated, and the information being presented at said tables reflects our student trustee's knowledge and opinions as they cannot speak for, as them cannot speak for the board, nor is them fully knowledgeable about the lawsuit as we have not been pulled into closed session to be informed as a board. My concern of whether or not any members of the board or administration had any involvement is a valid concern as our chair allowed the disruption to continue and did not enforce policy. I would like to address the valid concerns that most students addressed in their public comment about the temperance of the board and the lawsuit against the college. When concerning the temperature of the board, it was suggested by the students who made public comment, they believed the solution to be the temperature of the board was that certain trustees should just vote with the majority.
Point of order, Chair.
With all due respect, each trustee is an independent voter and, not per policy, I have five minutes, I'm going to continue. With all due respect, each trustee is an independent voter and are to vote independently, the majority wins. However, if we disagree, we are entrusted by our constituents to voice our concerns during board discussion and vote our conscience. One reason for this is any vote that is questioned for not being in compliance with Open Meetings Act and state statutes, those who voted no would not be held responsible for the consequences by our colleges' governing boards or attorney general. When this happens, it is a trustee's fiduciary duty to report these violations through the proper processage. Which brings me to the students' concerns about the lawsuit filed against the college, which is such, which is for such violations as mentioned above. Consider trivial by one student and a letter read by our student trustee. I would like to be very clear that the lawsuit is simply meant to bring to light the repeated violations of Open Meetings Act state statutes put in place by our governing boards to ensure transparency and prevent abuse of power. We are being ignored, which are being ignored by our current administration, legal counsel, executive board, and therefore our responsibility to file a lawsuit to stop this behavior. I agree, there should be a high level of concern about the lawsuit temperament of the board. Thank you for taking notice and expressing your concerns.
Trustee Broderick, your two minutes.
Which I think is unfair, okay? I'm going to mention this, I gave you in the report that I handed out, policy attendance record. I'm confused because none of the policy mentions that you can move, remove Michelle from any of the things. And if anything, Nancy, trustee Garcia, has the most cancellations, so I don't understand why you've done that. So here's the things that are there. Policy does not allow you to remove, it only says to appoint. And therefore, Michelle is still the ICCTA rep and the policy chair. Now, in regards to the other top things that I gave you, oh, and in regards to policy too, you had a meeting that was supposed to be 10:29, you ended up on 10:30? We didn't get a ten-day notice of change of meeting. So I don't think that meeting was appropriately or legal. And the guys had already approved it, so the next meeting's supposed to be November 19. Now, in regards to the first section of what I'm giving you, in regards to the Illinois Code 805-3-70 under Section 4 and the ICCB System Rules Manual under Section 1502.803 in regards to employment contracts and incentive pay increases, the performance criteria and goals upon which the bonus or incentive-based compensation is based must be available to the public on the district's official website in less than 48 hours before board approval of the contract. We did not get the contract on the president until October 14th at 8:03 a.m., which is a federal holiday. I've included in your paperwork the violations that we created by not getting it in time because Saturday, Sunday, and holidays do not count. And we did not get any goals or performance criteria, especially when the increase was 14%, when the normal's about 5. Therefore, it's making, we have an OMA violation and we have an Illinois Community College Act violation because we have not done things that should have been done and corrected. And that's why when we went to the ICCTA conference and they talked about having an attorney that knows what they're doing with contracts, higher education contracts, we need to get Robin Schwartz in.
Time is expired.
Thank you, Trustee Broderick.
I'm just saying, we should be, the contract and the retention bonus should be clawed.
Trustee Morales.
Yes, thank you. So I know I have two minutes, I'm going to respect that. I just want to let the students know, I want to thank you all for being here. I took this oath to stand on a board and come in and not get paid a nickel, okay? To make time to attend the meetings, to make sure we have policies, because we are providing a service, a service of education, okay? By where we employ many administration, we employ faculty members and unions. We have to negotiate seven union contracts. There's a lot of work that goes into being a trustee. And so I take the fact that the people voted for me, you all have the right to fire me when you think I'm not doing my job. And we do that when it's time for elections. We just had one. It wasn't for this office, but elections matter. Every single election, there's another one coming up, April 1st. You have to do your due diligence on the candidates and get out. Tell your friends, civic engagement is important. And it's so, we're seeing it now. I want to also let everyone know that we are not losing women's scholarships. Women will still apply for them, women will still be awarded. We have to follow the federal Title IX mandate so that we don't lose our Pell and MAP grants and all of our other federal funding, okay? So no woman is losing their scholarship. I understand that historically, women have been disadvantaged, okay? I get that. And this is a minority woman saying this, okay? So trust me, I get it, I've been there. What we are doing is we are creating a safe space for all students. We just received, Joliet Junior College just received the Equity and Inclusion Award, not just for our community, for our district, or our state, for the entire country, in spite of all of the differences that we're seeing. So I just want you guys to know that I'm excited to be here and thank you. And I guess you're not going to go to our second closed session, trustee Lee? That's two, you've been absent again. Thank you.
No, I have been assured by my lawyer and by my counselor, psychiatrist, that after what you guys are doing to me, I do not have to stay for closed session. I can continue to do what I've been doing, which is coming back and listening to the tapes afterwards so that I can know what's going on.
It's to be informed. You're not being harassed. Thank you.
We'll see about that, of course.
Trustee Queenie.
So I just want to provide a clarification for the board chair. I never told anybody to come to this meeting. I met with student government as a student trustee and, but then I also just, last month, when I was making a report, I wasn't reporting about student government putting together those tables. That was students organizing free speech tables of their own voices and choice. That was not student government, that was not Pride Alliance, that was not LU, that was not a club on this campus. That was individual, independent students here at JJC who chose to organize, to express their discontent and concern with this board. And secondly, and I'm sorry that trustee Lee left, because I just want to clarify, one referring to me, there are singular and plural terms, they, them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Stamborsky.
Thank you, Chair.
Time's up.
Sorry. All right. I have a whole lot to say.
Two minutes.
Makes a lot of us, I'm sure. Especially for all the students sitting out. It's 10 o'clock on a school night. You guys are strong. And I wanted to thank the student body for coming out. You're the most powerful voice in this room. Beyond a shadow of a doubt. Makes me proud to be a JJC alum. Knowing that we have such wonderful students here. Wonderful faculty, wonderful president. And the, everything going on the last several meetings, pretty far back. Makes me very sad. So there's a lot I wanted to talk about, but that's really the most important thing that needed to be discussed tonight. I yield my time. Thank you.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to, well, thank you first of all to our students. Thank you for your bravery, resilience, and courage for standing up for what is right and also for the humanity of your fellow peers. At JJC, we cannot replicate the hateful and dehumanizing rhetoric that we're currently hearing at the federal level prior to the elections and now post-elections. I am committed to continue to work with our president, Dr. Namou, to support our cabinet, administration, faculty, and students. JJC will continue to champion our DEI programs and initiatives to continue to expand programs like mental health services and continue to innovate in order to support our students in this challenging times that are going to, there's a lot of unknown. Again, special thanks to our students for holding us accountable to be able to represent your interests and not our individual agenda. So thank you.
I'm glad to see everyone still here. What's important about that to me is, in spite of what we've seen recently, these awards sitting in front of us tell us what other people think of the campus. When we're in Seattle, they don't watch our board meetings. They watch the results of what's happening on campus. And I watched people approach these two, you know, guys there all week long. People kept coming up to them, asking them about JJC. I know everywhere we were going, we were getting accolades and people wanted to know what we were doing. So unfortunately, we, you know, in this room, we know we had some things to work on. So as part of that, I just wanted you to know that in the communities and nationally, we're recognized as doing a lot of right things, both our students, our staff, especially the equity awards. I know I came out of one of the conferences and I was looking at, trying to sneak off and go somewhere for lunch, and Dr. Namou said, you got to come to lunch with us, your name's on the chair. We won something. So I had to run back in there and then, being an amateur at winning awards on a national level, I didn't realize you're not supposed to wear your lanyard up there. So Chi Hang Lee, the head of ACCT, comes up to me. I thought I was coming to say hi. He just rips it off my neck and says, where's Klein? So he went and took my lanyard back. And then, you know, as the buzz went around the room, Dr. Namou kept saying that, you know what? If we do win the national award, you have to give a speech.
Oh, boy.
So I didn't go out there ready to give a speech and I didn't go up on stage ready to give a speech. I read one that was done by Chad G. B. T.
Whoa, 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 Chairman, whoa. Whoa.
But, you know, during that speech though, the biggest applause during the speech was, when I mentioned that we have recently become a Hispanic serving institution, the room did, you know, applaud for that part of it. They know that, you know, what work goes in. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in that room that are working real hard to be where we're at. And that's what I want you just to realize. There's a lot of people that do not have what we have, that are envious of what we have. And regardless of what you see in these board meetings, I'm pretty certain all seven board members will stand outside with any student in front of the A Building and make sure they have a right to get through that door and onto this campus. I think there's some, you know, barriers to some of the discussions and things we are doing, but I don't think it affects the board's desire to have students in this building with, you know, welcoming arms. So as far as the different events, I went, in most of the conferences, there was at least one other JJC member there with me, except for one, I was in with drone piloting. And the only reason I did that one is because when I first got there, the first person that came up and started talking to me was all excited that this is her first time she's given a presentation. Will you come and see it? What I didn't realize is it was at the end of the day Friday when everyone else went home. But I did stay, I did go back to it because of her enthusiasm. But, you know, to support that enthusiasm, which is what we want to see with everyone here and everything we're doing. So pat yourselves on the back, share an applause. But we are doing a lot of real good things on this campus. The staff, again, the students are incredible. So don't let any of that get, you know, pushed aside by what you see up here at the round dais that we're all sitting behind. One of our former student trustees, and you guys can't see it, but behind each one of us, and this has been up there for a while, but it just says, remember, our students are watching. So, and we are aware of that. So with that, I thank you. We are going to go into another closed session. So at this time, I'm requesting a motion for that. We will not be returning to do any other board action. So if you want to ditch us while we're gone, now's a good time, but.
Hey Chair, real quick.
Yes.
He took my lanyard too.
Me too.
Me too. Yeah.
Who took your lanyard?
Yeah.
Chi Hang Lee?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. He took my lanyard.
You rookies. Let that be a lesson to you the next time we win something. And we will, and we will.
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Chairman, can you announce the reason why we're going into closed session?
We are going into closed session under 2C5.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick? Trustee Broderick?
Nope.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
I'm relying on my attorney for guidance.
She's gone, okay. Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion returned to general session, who said?
So moved.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.